Regular meeting, May the 7th. We'll start off with the call to order and the roll call by our town clerk.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance. Member Behringer. Councilmember Singleton. I'm sorry, excuse me. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Dellinger.
Here.
Yes, Mr. Singleton was in contact with us earlier today and had a good reason to be excused. We need a motion to approve his absence on this. Moved by Mr. Vance, seconded by Mr. Matthews. All in favor of making this an excused absence for Mr. Singleton, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed by nay. The motion passes unanimously and will move ahead. We'll move next to our pledge of allegiance. If you would stand and I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, undaunted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. And for the invocation, we have a special guest. We have a special guest tonight. I met him at the Relay for Life and then I met him again at the National Prayer Breakfast Day. And I'm very glad to have with us the relatively new pastor of the Lord of Life Lutheran Church, the Reverend Dr. Wolfgang Erchlein, better known as Pastor Wolfgang.
Thank you so much and good evening, everyone. It's true, I'm relatively new. I just started my third month as pastor and mission developer at Lord of Life. And I have to tell you, the more I find out about the town of Garner, the more impressed I am with the spirit of community that I find, both in the church and in the community. And I'm very, very glad, Mayor, that you invited me to come and give the invocation this evening. I thought I'd read to you a little bit from Psalm 46 and then close with a short prayer. Psalm 46. God is our refuge and strength, a very present help in trouble. Therefore we will not fear, though the earth be moved, and though the mountains shake in the depth of the sea, though its waters rage and foam, and though the mountains tremble with its tumult. There is a river whose streams make glad the city of God, the holy abomination of the Most High. God is in the midst of the city; it shall not be shaken. God will help it at the break of day. The nations rage, and the kingdom speaks, and the earth melts away. God is our refuge and strength, a very present help in trouble. Let us pray. O God, you have called your servants to ventures of which we cannot see the ending, by paths as yet untraden, through perils unknown. Give us faith to go out with good courage, not knowing where we go, but only that your hand is leading us and your love is supporting us. We pray this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Let the people of God say amen.
Very much, Pastor Wolfgang. We move now to petitions and comments, and it's always instructive to read some of the details here to kind of keep us on track. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items that are not included in the regular agenda regarding matters that are germane to town policies or business or subjects within the town council's real or apparent jurisdiction. Individuals or group spokespersons must sign up with the town clerk prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on the subject matter brought up during this session. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for future agenda. And I see that we have at least one person signed up here tonight. That's Mr. Alex Lee. If you would come to the podium, sir, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Paul Alexander Lee, Jr. I live at 8345 Hebron Church Road, Garner. Most people around here know me as Alex. I have something I'd like to share with the members of the council. These are pictures that my wife and I have taken. And what it is, is we've noticed that people have been hauling debris to the next door to us, which is the Walters Buffalo, which is now called Cambria. And they've been dumping it. And we'd ask the drivers, where are you coming from? And they'd say, over at the SPCA and over on Tryon Road. And so that's the first five pictures that you see there will be the SPCA on Pet Finder Drive. And that's the McDonald York project. So evidently, but that's where they're clearing and they're bringing all the debris over to Cambria. And that's a poultry project. That's the next five pictures. You'll see the dump trucks there dumping it out. But the last two pictures in this group, I really want you to notice, this is a project on Highway 50 and 42 in Johnston County. And you'll see a big machine there. That's a grinding machine. And you'll see pile, a next picture will be piles of mulch. It bothers me to think that the council cannot require all the development that's going on, that they dispose of, their stump grinders and their limb grinders and things like this. They could grind all this stuff up and it could be sold. As far as around me, I'll give them a place to bring it and grind it up and leave it. I'll get rid of it. But the smoke is killing us when they go and burn it. And I didn't think that they were allowed to go from one project, which is both in the Garner jurisdiction. That's what I think that SPCA is. And they're hauling it from there over on us. The two trucking companies that have done this is Dunston Trucking Company and DEB Trucking Company, but they're only hired by the grading contractor. The grading contractor is CapCon, Capital Construction Company. They're hauling it eight and a half miles to what I think they're going to burn it. Now, I haven't been in touch with Rob Rudloff with the Cambria operation to find out if they're going to burn it, but I don't think they're going to bring it, bringing it there to grind it up. I'll report back. When they could have taken it, at least from that, over at Pet Finder Lane, they could have driven three miles and taken it to Buffalo Landfield, and they do grind up stuff over there. So I'd like you just to consider how it's going to be when they strike the match. And you've got 1,810 students across the road at Garner, South Garner High School. How do you think, they ought to be, you know, burning, burning all this stuff and all over the schoolyard? But anyway, I'd like you to consider this as to what's going on. Anything else that you, you've got a lot of ways to have these builders or whatever to, to do what you want them to. And you could put restrictions on some of their stuff as far as burning, burning this stuff. You could have them to grind it if you wanted to. You've done a lot of things. You've put a lot of restrictions on people, and I don't see why you can't do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. That's good observation. Does anybody on the staff want to make a comment or anything related to this, or we'll just look into it? We'll look into this, this is a serious matter. It seemed like you had a similar issue before in your area. So, yeah, we take this seriously. We appreciate you bringing it to our attention and we will be back in touch.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if Mr. Lee or anyone else observes something like that, have, reach out immediately because we can also address it as it's happening and we'll be happy to do that. And you can still report out as you, as you see fit, Mr. Lee, but reach out to us. We can often take care of things as they're happening when you're observing them. So just let us know anytime you have those things.
Okay, we get to the adoption of, unless there was another person signed up, town clerk, was there anyone else signed up to speak in petitions? Okay, thank you. We will move to the adoption of the agenda. The council members have looked this over and I will ask the council members if there's a motion to adopt the agenda.
The moved.
Mr. Vance makes the motion. Mr. Matthews seconds. All in favor of adopting the agenda, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay. Hearing none is unanimous. The agenda is adopted. We'll move, we have a lengthy agenda, but it's some good stuff. And we're starting out with some of the best stuff. Proclamations. I've been in the habit of passing these along to someone else to read, but both of these are dear to my heart and I'd like to read this, this first proclamation here. It's the Peace Officers Memorial Day Police Week in Garner. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States through Public Law 87726, signed by President John F. Kennedy in 1962, proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas Public Law 103322, signed by President William Clinton in 1994, directs that the flag of the United States on all government buildings be displayed at half-staff on May 15th of each year. And whereas the members of the Garner Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the town of Garner. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the law enforcement agency. And that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Garner Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Buddy Gupton, Mayor of the Town of Garner, North Carolina, do call upon all citizens of the Town of Garner and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through 18th, 2024, as National Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Further, I call upon all citizens of Garner to observe May 15th, 2024, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. With that in mind, I'd like to present this to Chief Lori Smith, as you join me at the Have some remarks to make as well.
I'll keep my remarks brief. We're very fortunate to work for such a supportive community, so thank you. We're also very thankful and appreciative for the support that we receive from our town leadership and also from our town council. So thank you. We appreciate it.
Now the mandatory photo op. If you'll step over here. Hair and makeup first, please. Where would you like it? Certainly make a comment.
Thank you, sir. For all the folks watching, I think I speak well for all of us up here. The city council and all of our staff in the Town of Garner, we support our police department. We make sure they get paid correctly and very competitive and with the benefits they need. And they've got strong leadership by Chief Smith and all of her staff. As you can see, we've got some gigantic policemen. Don't you worry, they'll be there for you. But we do stand behind them. You know, with the stay in time, when so many times towns or cities want to support their police and emergency services, we do stand behind them. And I think everybody in this town stands behind them because when it's going down, you like to see the blue light and you like to see the red light, just as quick as you can get there. So, but on behalf of us up here, we're very proud of our police department and we got your back. And whatever you need, always tell Chief Smith to let us know. We'll give you the tools to work with and I think she's finding the bodies to wear those tools. So thank you again for what you do.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. And we have another proclamation. There are fewer words, but it's just as important. And this is for a department that's not quite as glamorous, but equally important. This is a proclamation about the public work services provided in our community. They are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. Whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, public buildings, solid waste collection, snow removal. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depend on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the public work personnel. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Buddy Gupton, Mayor of the Town of Garner, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week in the Town of Garner. And call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public work services and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And I would ask Director Forrest Jones to join me at the podium, please.
And you might make, Mike might want to comment too. Thank you. I'll be brief, I promise. I know we've got a full agenda. So good evening to mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. It's certainly a privilege that I'm here to stand before you tonight representing the men and women of Public Works. I stand here before you tonight, but I will tell you this, it is our team that delivers the quality services we have every day. This is not a one-person show. I would not be here and have the support we have and success we have without them. So thank you for allowing me that opportunity. In 1960, APWA received an official endorsement from United States Senate and organized the first Public Works Week. Every year, a theme is established for National Public Works Week, the most recent being Stronger Together, and then the rhythm of public, the rhythm of public works. This year, it's advancing the quality of life for all. It's been stated before that Public Works impacts you every day of your life. And I think this, these, these, as I reflect on the most recent theme, it really highlights that. As I look at some of our partners in the room that we've already recognized tonight, our police department, our fire department, our friends in Parks and Rec, and many other departments across the town, it truly takes all of us to work together to meet the needs of our community. We look forward to the upcoming theme that reminds us that we remain, that we need to remain in rhythm as we continue working together to advance the quality of life for all. Also this year, not only in these proclamations, we'll be lighting up the front of Town Hall of the week of Police Week, we'll be lighting it up blue as a way to serve and remind our entire community that we are celebrating our men and women in police. We'll also be, on the following week, lighting up the front of our town orange in honor of Public Works Week, which again is a little less noted, but we're nonetheless grateful for the opportunity to be able to do that and hopefully advance the word about Public Works. Council, many of you should have received an invitation by now to come and join us for some engaging fun and fellowship on our Public Works campus later in May. Hope you'll be able to do that. Again, I want to thank the council for its proclamation and your continued support of Public Works. I also want to thank the town manager's office for the support we receive from them, Ms. Miller, Mr. Hodges, for their continued support in allowing us to do the work we do. Thank you.
And the mandatory photo.
Mandatory photo op.
And we've got more good news, but not another proclamation. Right now, we're going to consider a resolution proposing the unification of the Garner Fire Rescue with the Town of Garner. And our interim town manager, Ms. Jody Miller, is going to be the presenter and tell us about this.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening. Tonight, for your consideration and approval, is a joint resolution with the Garner Fire Rescue Department Board towards implementing Phase Three and Four of our work to consider merging the fire department with the towns' operations. We have several members of the Garner Fire Rescue Board here with us this evening. I'd like to recognize, we have the president, Mr. Sample is here, just, thank you for being here, board member Nancy Anderson, and we also have Stacy Colas, a board member as well. And I think that's everyone I saw come in, so. Jeffrey, right? Jeffrey, Jeffrey Gully. So nice to see you again. Welcome. We're pleased that you're here. So, and of course with us is Chief Poole as well. So before I provide an overview of the proposed resolution, I thought it might be helpful to talk about the timeline for the work that we've been doing over the last several years and sort of the importance of the resolution and the step that we're asking be approved as part of the resolution. So this gives a timeline of the discussions and work that has happened since 2017. You can see, that's when the town and the fire board started discussions on whether or not it was a good idea to consider merging the fire department with the town operations. And part of that includes creating the, you can, to really look at the opportunities and challenges with potentially looking at a merger and do a deeper study and review of the idea. Part of the MOU included not only staff members, but members of the council, including Mayor Gupton, former mayor Marshburn, council member Matthews, council member Vance. And also with us this evening is Buck Kennedy, who's a former council member who's also served on that MOU committee as well. So just want to recognize those who served on the MOU committee on the town side, on the fire board side. Ms. Anderson was one of the representatives on, on the MOU committee, as well as Carl Williams and Kenny Walker. So, and we started talking about this issue back in 2017. And then moved forward to 2021, this is when the town, with the support of the fire board, hired North Carolina Fire Chiefs Consulting to help us with this process, to really be able to facilitate the discussions and bring their expertise to the table as we evaluated this opportunity. Part of that work that the NC Fire Chiefs Consulting Group was hired to perform included four phases. So back in 2021, we were able to complete Phase One. Phase One really looked at gathering and presenting internal stakeholder feedback on this idea. So members of the town council, members of the fire board, members of the fire staff were interviewed as part of this discussion to really get their feedback, to get their ideas, to get their questions, to learn more about their concerns about potentially moving forward with this idea. So that was completed as Phase One in 2021. And 2022, as part of this work, the MOU committee, working with town staff and Chief Poole and his staff, did a benefits review just to really get, do a deeper dive as we thought about employees from the fire department coming over as town employees. What would the benefits look like? What were similar? What were different? And what things will we need to consider if we decided to move forward? So when we looked at those benefits review, there were three areas that we really focused on as part of that analysis and work. One looked at longevity pay. The second looked at retiree health insurance. And then the third just looked at general health insurance for employees. And so we were able to do that comparison, provide that analysis, so we really had a understanding as we were continuing our conversations regarding possible merger. And 2023 is when we took on Phase Two of the work from the North Carolina Fire Chief Consulting Group, working with Chief Greg Grayson. Phase Two really looked at gathering information and from residents and users of the system to really get an understanding of what's important to them, what their thoughts about a potential merger would be, what questions or concerns they may have. Part of that work included hosting two public meetings. We held one here in Town Hall, inside the town limits. We also held one in the Panther Branch area outside the town limits for those who were living outside the municipal area to get their feedback and ideas and concerns regarding a possible merger. In addition to hosting the two public meetings, there was also an online survey that anyone who was interested could take, and we worked with our communications team here at the town to make sure residents and those who have services provided by the Garner Fire Rescue Department had an opportunity to share their questions and thoughts regarding a possible merger. And that information was then shared and presented to the MOU committee. As you see, we are now at 2024, at a pivotal point in our discussions and work for the fire merger. And this pivotal point really focuses on approving the joint resolution that's presented before you this evening. What this resolution really does is it sort of sets the pace for and direction for completing Phase Three and Four of the contract services provided by the North Carolina Fire Chiefs Consulting Group. Phases Three and Four really focus on conducting a financial and operational analysis and developing an implementation plan. And Phase Four looks at really working with the fire department as well as the town staff during a transition process. So, by approving the resolution tonight, the council is getting direction to staff to go ahead and move forward with these two phases in order to bring back a plan and an agreement for a possible merger with the fire department. Thinking ahead, as far as timelines, if we were to move forward as planned with this work for Phase Three and Four, our goal would be then to bring back before the fire board and the town council finalized MOU agreement based on the information and data that we received from the Phase Three and Phase Four efforts, and bring that back in early 2025 for council's consideration and for the fire board's consideration as well. Assuming that's approved, we would look for an implementation date of July 1, 2025, and that's where we're projecting the merger date would be. So, I'm just going to take a few moments to walk you through the things that are included in the resolution. Specifically, the first part of the resolution just gives you a little bit of background and history on sort of the work of the MOU committee over the last several years and their reviews and evaluations of this possible merger. If you look at the second part of the resolution, there are certain areas where, from an MOU committee's point, there are certain areas where we've said, yes, we have agreement upon and we'd like to see that reflected in a formal MOU agreement between the town and the fire board if the merger were to move forward. And so, you'll see under the authorization to proceed, that really gives direction and guidance to staff on completing that Phase Three and Phase Four with Chief Grayson as part of the process. The second item looks at the projected merger date, and as I mentioned before, our target would be July 1, 2025, in order to align that with the fiscal year and make sure that fire department staff are enrolled in our benefits appropriately. We talked about service area and wanting to make sure that the same level of fire protection and first responder services that are provided in the town continue to be provided in the unincorporated areas. And so, that was important to both the town and to the fire board as we talked about possible merger. Wanting to maintain the ISO rating and accreditation, these are two really important and significant achievements of the fire department, and make sure that any possible merger continues to maintain and support those significant efforts. We also talked about employees and making sure the employees are taken care of as far as transferring employees from Garner Fire Rescue Department employees to being town employees and what that would look like as far as their benefits, how we would recognize their years of service and those kinds of things. We also talked about specific benefits that are important to the fire department, in particular, health insurance. As we know, fire protection and fire service, there can be increased rates of health issues with those employees, and so they wanted to make sure we understood those issues and to make sure when we consider our health insurance benefits that we're being mindful about, making sure we provide the highest level possible, and also that we allow the network to be as wide as possible for firefighters. We identified the longevity benefit currently that the fire department provides and the town provides, their different policies, and so we recognize that as part of the benefit analysis that I mentioned we completed in 2023. So, as part of our discussions about moving this idea forward, we said we're going to recognize that difference and look for a way to make sure that those who currently qualify for the fire department's benefit, but maybe don't qualify under the town's policy, we somehow make them whole as part of the merger. And so, we would work on that in terms of the negotiation through an agreement as well. A few other areas where we focused on as part of the MOU discussions, just to make sure we're continuing to support the fire department and to make sure from a capital standpoint, the town really understood what the needs and opportunities were for the fire department. We talked about installing a generator at the fire admin building, and I'm excited to share that's underway. Our public works department has been working with the fire department to go ahead and start that process to make sure that they have generator power should an emergency happen and they lose power. Capital planning has also been important and working with the fire board and sort of thinking about their evolution from the fire board they are now to potentially a nonprofit organization, being able to maintain some of the history and some of the capital things that the fire board has purchased themselves as a fire board, and so that was included as well. We looked at also, looked at opportunities and had discussions regarding relocation, specifically regarding, you know, not only where we have stations now, fire stations now, but where do we need to plan for the future? With all this growth we're seeing in the community, where do we need to plan for the future? And as I've shared with council before, we're in the process of working with the fire department on that study, a study to be able to tell us, you know, based on population growth and what we see as service calls, where do we need to plan for future stations? But also, more importantly, looking at our current stations and saying, are they in the right position or are they beyond their useful life and we need to look at moving those stations and building new stations? In particular, the Station Two project was something that we were interested in and the fire board has indicated to us it's a priority for them. So, those are the kind of things we looked at as part of the MOU discussions. And the final thing was to begin our work, or continue our work, on a joint emergency operations center for the town, including police department, including fire, public works, public information. We have an EOC, we just needed to sort of reboot it and make sure with so many new people in the organization, so many new people in our community, we really understand sort of during a disaster, you know, where are we going to house our EOC, what roles are we all going to take, and how are we going to make sure that we can communicate with each other? That's something we've been working on since the beginning of the year, and we're continuing to work on that. But it was important to include that as part of the resolution as well, to make sure that collaboration was, is happening, but also that it's clear that there's an expectation of that collaboration. So, that gives you some brief highlights and review of the resolution that's been provided, the draft resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Chief Poole is here as well. I will share with the board, share with the council that the fire board will be looking at this resolution at their May 14th board meeting and taking action on it.
That was an excellent job of summarizing a whole lot of information that has been going on for a long time. Are there any questions for Ms. Miller from our council members here?
Thank you so much for the information and from all the hard work from everyone who's been involved. Just a couple of timeline questions. On the relocation, number 10, it says that there'll be a station relocation study completed by July 1st, 2024. Is that going to be, is that started and it'll be done by July?
Yes, that has started, the fire department has started that. I double-checked with Chief Poole, he feels like they can have that wrapped up by July 1st, which is very helpful for us from a town perspective because we start doing our CIP discussions and review in late summer, early fall, so that timing really aligns well with our work on the CIP.
And another question on the timeline with regards to the fiscal analysis and impact, what's the timeline with that and then in conjunction with next year's budget?
So, in the ideal world, and I've already reached out to Chief Grayson and asked him to put a timeline together for us for a go-live date of July 1, 2025, we would have the financial and operational analysis completed no later than the end of calendar year 2024. That then provides us the information analysis for, as we start our budget preparation, of what considerations and needs we would need to be aware of, but it also provides some time for both the fire board and then the council to then look at that analysis, provide some guidance on things, and then gives us time to then draft a memorandum of understanding between both bodies for the potential merger for review and consideration. Ideally, we would have that work done and approved in the, I would say probably the April timeframe of next year, because then that would allow for the fire employees to enroll in our open enrollment for benefits, which typically is early May, to make sure if the fire merger did happen, as of July 1, everyone would be covered under new benefits as a town employee. These are all very, these are all targets and very ambitious and hopeful, but realizing we want to make sure we have the appropriate time to do the high-level work that we need to, from the town's perspective, from the fire board's perspective, to make sure we have the information to provide to both bodies to make a very informed decision.
You could have a goal, timeline.
Indeed.
If I may, I'd like to say congratulations, this is a major milestone achieved and a lot of hard work has gone into it over the years. We're looking at, starting in 2017, now it's 2024, we're looking at roughly seven years of planning and putting things together and working together to hash out details to reach this point, which is a crucial point. And my hat's off to all the, all involved, the fire board and all of the council and everyone else who was involved in this process. And to include, to include our fire chief as well.
Comment, questions for Ms. Miller?
Just comment, it, having served on that board, we've all gotten to know each other a lot more and, and I appreciate Ms. Miller taking the lead on that and putting it all together and some, you know, there was a lot of stuff we were working through and trying to make sure we did a good job and it was done right. And I know Chief Poole taking the lead on his side over there and working with his board, we had a good communications going. That was the most important thing, communicating, because if we don't know what we're trying to achieve and work together on it, it would never have happened. And I agree, this is a major milestone. It's going to be an exciting time and like the police department, we've got a fine fire department, they're well-trained and that certification's a big deal, and I think we're one out of 200 or 300 nationally has that, Chief Poole. That's a big deal and it speaks well of our fire department. And we've got a lot to be proud of because when it happens, those guys and ladies are there. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews, if no further questions at this point, I might ask a representative of the Garner Fire Board, Mr. Sample, the President of the Fire Board, if you're available, would you mind sharing a few comments, a few thoughts with us? And you have your choice of podium, center or side stage.
Right there.
It'll be good, that's right. Thank you. Mr. Joe Sample, he's the, I like to call him my counterpart, he's the top civilian officer related to the fire department. We have professionals, Chief Poole and interim town manager Miller, who do the heavy work, and Joe and I just have visions and ideas and leadership, stuff like that, right? Thank you, Joe. You've been with us a long time, sir, and you've been intimately involved in this. We're eager to hear any observations that you've got.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Chief Poole, fellow fire board members, and Garner citizens. I'm sorry that I have a raspy voice, it's the best I can do. As most of you know, I'm Joe Sample, President of the Garner Fire Board. This evening marks a pivot point in the relations between the town and the Garner Volunteer Fire Department. As y'all know, a dedicated group of ten now deceased concerned citizens chartered new territory in 1952 by purchasing a well-used old fire truck from Durham Fire Department for $1,000 and organized the first Garner Fire Department. The truck was located next to a beauty shop on Old Garner Road, just west of the Old Garner Elementary School. The town soon responded by making available an old cinder block building on Pearl Street that had a couple of truck bays to house the nascent fire department. Times were tough during those early days. The Garner Fire Department had volunteers, a couple of ruddy old trucks, but little cash. I remember hearing stories from some of those initial firefighters that they would attend mandatory Tuesday training sessions and sometimes had to pass the hat and a fire boot because there wasn't enough money to pay the electric bill or the gas bill. It was touch and go at times, some gave all, all gave some. By 1970, the firefighters had gone from door to door as they had for years to fundraise and finally constructed what is now Fire Station Number One at the intersection corner of Main Street and NC 50. It was a proud moment to go in 18 years from dream to reality. By 1976, they added more volunteers and opened Fire Station Number Two on Saul's Road in Panther Branch Township. They were a proud bunch. The volunteers honed their firefighting skills every Tuesday night. One blustery freezing night in 1972, the lieutenant driving an engine returned from a call, returning from a call, slipped off the road and into the ditch. And don't you know, there was this new brush newspaper editor in town and a photographer who snapped the picture of the stock truck. It was published on page one. There were red faces and warm words of lesser endearment uttered that week. You can bet your life on that. A couple of weeks later, there occasioned another fire, and when the photographer showed up to memorialize the fire scene in pictures, he was promptly baptized by a strong stream of water from a fire hose. It was game on. But an understanding was reached. All parties understood that a good fire picture in the newspaper was good for fundraising and was equally good for newspaper sales. And so, the two started cooperating. Firemen worked tirelessly in their losing effort to save Town Hall when it burned in 1974. But just before dawn, as they headed to go home to about their daily lives, they went to breakfast at Fire Station Number One, fixed and prepared by Dirk Purvis-Jones, Mickey Cochran, and other initial fire department retired firemen. You can't imagine how good a sausage and egg biscuit tasted after being at the fire scene for more than five hours in that cold weather. I remember the taste of this day and the mug of black coffee. There followed many good days for the fire department, many atta boys bestowed upon them for their good works and the skill set when Old Win Dixie burned, when Agro Supply caught fire, when a gasoline tanker tipped over on US 70. And there was less than good days, especially when a rogue employee forever changed the way the fire department managed its business. Some dozen months or more before, the fire board and its members decided to add a non-fire citizen to their board of directors. I was so shocked and amazed when I was invited. I thought it was a joke. I called Jerry Jones and asked, is thy chief kidding me? Few others believed it either, but I promised then-chief and board president Steve Woodall to do my best. But that rogue employee caused a darkness to fall upon the department, and at first we didn't recognize the bright light at the end of the long tumultuous tunnel of darkness. That light, however, got brighter about a year later when the board appointed Matthew Poole as fire chief, and a month or two later, upon his recommendation, we authorized the employment of Tim Herman to be deputy chief. Little did any of us realize the time that we had just Little did any of us realize the time that we had just landed the mother lode. The Fire Department had about 30 employees and a budget of $1.5 million. The Board encouraged the Chief. The Chief inspired the Board, and it was poetry in motion, I want to tell you. After several years of intense work, the Garner Fire Department became internationally accredited. What a proud day. What a proud day. Years of work, and we were internationally accredited. A year or so later, we were awarded an ISO rating of one. There's only 10 ISO ratings. 10 means you're just about out of business. One, you're the best. Mr. Matthews, you commented about the accreditation. There are 30,000 Fire Departments in the United States. Only 300 of them are accredited, and that, that speaks volumes for the Garner Fire Department. And another proud day in the history of the Garner Fire Department, and Garner is well-recognized as a leader, not just locally, but throughout the state and the nation. And I speak for our Board. We are just so proud of Chief Poole and all he has done to make the Garner Fire Department not just good, but truly great. To be honest, in 2017, when the town said it wanted to merge operations, it was a shocking and stunning blow. We, as a Board, didn't say no, but neither was there a hint of yes in our collective voices and thinking. But time changes many things. Time moved on. The town elected a new mayor. Apex hired our Deputy Fire Chief, Tim Herman, to be their new Fire Chief. Our Board President of 25 years retired. Change was on the horizon, and we, as a Board, began to consider merger as a possibility. The town and the Board started trading talking points and staking out their respective opinions and decisions, and on a baker's dozen of items. And all of that has coalesced into the resolution which you consider tonight. But now I got to tell you that I am just a wee bit worried about the future and the hereafter. At that, at that point of time, when I'm approaching the pearly gates of heaven, and I'm just hoping that the giants of men who served before me, like former firefighters Purvis Jones and Alex Umstead and Richard Gully, Noel Bryan, Mickey Cochran aren't on St. Peter's Committee on Abmittance to Eternity, I could be in real trouble. Joe Sample, you did what to our Fire Department? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me the opportunity to reflect on the Garner Volunteer Fire Department over the last 50-some years that I've been personally involved. We're now more than 85 employees, strong. We're five stations, running more than 7,000 calls a year on a budget of about $11 million. The Fire Department has come a long, long way in the last, since 1970, 1972, '52. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sample. Thank you. Mr. Sample, I believe, I believe when you get to the pearly gates and your brothers are there, they're going to say, "Come on in." Yeah, you, you've done a great job here. And just to remind everybody, this is a very important step. This is, this is not a resolution to merge the Fire Department and town. The resolution before us tonight is to, will we, the town, commit to spending another year of intensive review and study to see if this really is the right fit and if we can really make it work in the right way? We're asking the town, we're asking the Fire Board to do the same thing. They'll consider this resolution or similar resolution at their meeting next week. And if they pass that, then we will be working in the same team for a full year to work out details to see if we really can complete this process a little over a year from now. So great work by everyone involved. If there's, are there other questions or comments from Council members? Inspiring story, Joe. Thank, thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to ask for a Council member for a motion to adopt the Resolution 20, Resolution 2024-2576 that would authorize us to spend the next year in the intensive review. Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It'd give me great privilege to do this, and it's been a long time coming, and we'll finish the work, and that transition will be smooth, Mr. Sample, and, and we'll take it to another level, and it's all going to be positive, I can assure you. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2024-2576 proposing unification of Garner Fire Rescue Incorporated with the Town of Garner.
Taken by Ms. Behringer, motion made by Mr. Matthews. All in favor of adopting this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. A big step. Thank you. Thank you. Any further comments, Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of Council. Once the Fire Board takes action on this resolution, then the, the real work on the financial and operational analysis happens to really do that final analysis and evaluation to be shared with Council and the Fire Board. So we appreciate the town's support in, in making this happen and moving forward with Phase Three and Four. I also would just like to personally thank the members of the MOU Committee who've been so diligent in doing this work since 2017 for your guidance and your wisdom and your willingness to compromise and work through areas where there wasn't always consensus. Appreciate that work to date, and I think it really shows in the work that we've been able to accomplish with the resolution. I also would like to personally thank Chief Poole. He's been a true partner with me in working through this at the staff level, making sure we're really hearing and understanding the concerns at the, from MOU Committee members, that we're providing strategies and solutions to address those, and making sure that we are putting together a plan and putting together a decision based on all the right information and data, and to help both the Town Council and the Fire Board to make a very informed decision. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And moving right along on our agenda tonight, we move to item number four, which technically is a presentation. It's an update from one of our most important, most important partners in the area here. Some of you have heard the word CAMPO, but you're not sure what it means. It's the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. They work with Wake County and about, about five others, and they're one of our major conduits for coordinating transportation projects with our neighbors and with DOT, with the federal government, and all of those things. And our presenter tonight is Gabby Lontos-Laylor, and I think, Gabby, you have some connection with Garner here.
I do, and thank you for that introduction, Mr. Mayor. It's good to see so many familiar faces here. So I was formerly at the Town of Garner in the Planning Department, but have since moved on to the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, which was funny because I started off working on this study while I was still at the town and then went over to the MPO. But anyways, it's good to be back here to provide an update on this study. So I'll be providing a final briefing on the Southeast Area Study, otherwise referred to as the CESE. And here you've got an outline of what I will be presenting this evening. So I'll be providing a project refresher for any who are not familiar with the study. I will walk you through the contents that are included in the CESE report, and then for project prioritization, just explaining what the methodology was to prioritize the projects coming out of the study, and then finally, an overview of endorsement efforts. So the CESE update was a planning effort that was conducted across the region and across jurisdictional boundaries. It included the, roughly the southeast corner of Wake County and Johnston County, and was a partner effort between CAMPO and the Upper Coastal Plain Rural Planning Organization, or the UCP RPO. And so the, the goal of the study was to develop a unified vision for the integration of land use and transportation to accommodate existing and future travel needs. So at the outset of the study, we worked off of the guiding principles that was, were established in the original 2017 CESE, and we took these guiding principles to the public, to the stakeholder oversight team, and to the core technical team, just to reaffirm that these were still consistent with how we want to continue growing and developing in the region. So moving to the project schedule, as you can see, we're on the tail end of the schedule, currently providing presentations to, to councils and to planning boards to secure endorsement of the recommendations coming out of the study. And then this will ultimately culminate in CAMPO's Executive Board endorsing the recommendations. So moving on to the report, you see here the, the chapters that are included, and I'm going to walk through those in the next couple of slides here. So the Introduction Chapter sets up the, the context for the study, and it provides an update to what change, to account for the changes that have occurred in the CESE community since the original 2017 study, since, as we are all aware, there's been a lot of rapid growth in the region. And it also provides an acknowledgement of the communities involved and the project partners in this effort. So the planning framework essentially outlines the, the process that was followed in the study, an overview of the outreach efforts in Phase One and Phase Two, and also the work that was completed with the, the Guiding Technical Committee and Stakeholder Advisory Groups. So the regional snapshot documents existing conditions as well as future conditions, to the extent that we can project that going forward. And it essentially set up the building block to help inform what infrastructure is needed to help support future conditions. Land use, oh, sorry, thought I muted there for a second. So the Land Use and Scenario Planning Chapter basically takes a look at recommending policies and regulations to help support the, the goals and the principles, the guiding principles from the study. And the scenario planning, so you have what-if scenarios, taking a look at, you know, how development is occurring and, and redevelopment, and essentially, how do we keep up with that in terms of the infrastructure to support it? So the study developed recommendations for roadway, bicycle, pedestrian, and transit modes, and the study provided an opportunity to revisit the realm of transportation recommendations that are out there, both from the original CESE, but also from local transportation plans. And it provided an opportunity to either reaffirm whether those recommendations are still, are still accurate, or if they needed to be revised, or in a few instances, there were recommendations that were determined that were no longer necessary. And so the Action Plan is the, basically the meat of the report. It includes the list of the recommendations by mode and walks through the project prioritization And moving into the prioritization, so the projects were sorted into near-term, which was roughly projects that were targeted for the five to 10-year timeframe; midterm, which is 10 to 20; and long-term, which is 30 years further out. So for bicycle and pedestrian, bicycle and pedestrian mode, recommendations in the near-term were generally for those that would fill gaps in the network, particularly within towns. Midterm were for recommendations that would connect across towns and to recreational resources. And long-term was recommendations to complete the regional multimodal system. For transit, these were prioritized generally by transit propensity, meaning areas where the demographics and/or the land use was supportive of transit. Recommendations in the mid-to-long-term range was more so for areas where there's not necessarily a market there for transit, but we project that there will be in the future. For roadway projects, these were generally prioritized by congestion improvement based on need. So basically, projects that would provide high travel time savings and on roadways that are experiencing high congestion would be prioritized sooner. And the same prioritization process was followed for intersection recommendations, essentially. So moving on to endorsement efforts, as I mentioned, we're currently undergoing endorsement efforts, and the recommendations coming out of the study will filter up to the CAMPO 2055 MTP, which is currently underway. It's being updated. And as I mentioned, the study was completed in unison with the UCP RPO. They have their own CTP that is separate from CAMPO's MTP. The process for the RPO and for its member communities to endorse the recommendations is slightly different. But I also wanted to mention that as a part of this last phase of the study, we have been coordinating with local staff across CESE jurisdictions, just as a final check to make sure, you know, hey, are these recommendations, like are there, are there, is there anything that is off or anything that needs to be tweaked or modified before there is official endorsement? So, you know, we've been coordinating with, with Jeff and with Leah and the Engineering Department, and there were a couple of recommendations that they, they did suggest that we modify slightly. So I just mentioned that so that you all know that the, this work is not being done in a vacuum. We're trying to work as closely with our, our partners as, as best as we can. And so with that, I wanted to point out that the final report and supporting documentation can be found on CAMPO's website under the Area Studies tab. The public comment for the study started in April and will end the day before the Executive Board presentation in June, which is June 12, I believe, so technically, the public comment period officially ends June 11. But otherwise, my contact information is up there if, if anybody would like to reach out to me, or otherwise, if anybody has any questions now, I'm, I'm happy to address those. Otherwise, thank you for having me here this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Very informative. Are there questions or comments from Council members on this topic? Okay. Well...
Good to see you again. Thanks for the information. Just a couple of quick questions on, one, I kind of like the emphasis on compact development that's mentioned in there and sort of highlighting the impacts of the current development pattern. I think that's informative to us. I think all this is informative to us as we look to our transportation planning. I did have a question about this Garner Clayton BRT, which is the first time I've seen any reference to such a thing. What is, I see the corridor, it makes sense, but sort of the position for, of other municipalities' involvement, and where did that come from, and where does it look like as far as a possibility?
The, the transit recommendations, so as I mentioned, the, we, through the study, we were, you know, acknowledging other planning studies that have overlapped with the area. So you have the, the BRT Extensions Project that was taking a look at, basically, it wouldn't be exactly the same as, say, the, the Southern BRT or the other core BRT that City of Raleigh is currently working on, but it would be kind of more like an express bus setup. And, I mean, I'll also mention that some of, basically what the, what the study was doing is just identifying where there might be opportunities for other transit service, but they would have to be explored and studied further, basically, for it to come to be.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, before us tonight is a resolution to support CAMPO's recommendations associated with the Southeast Area Study. And with that being, I will accept a motion from the Council.
I move that the Council adopts a resolution of support for 2024-2578.
It's a motion by Mr. Vance, and it's taken by Ms. Behringer to support the resolution here to pass this, this endorsement. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, forward, I was going to ask you this a while ago. The presentation that Mr. Sample did earlier, I want to think you'd print that out and make it available for us history buffs to review that. And Chief Bull, if you'll pass that on to me, it was great. I'd love to have a copy of that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that brings us up to item number five on the presentations, and this is the presentation about a recommended budget for the coming year. And we're back to our budget team over here, headed by interim Town Manager Jody Miller, and you're going to be assisted by folks that you can introduce as you need them.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Members of Council, I present for your review and consideration the recommended budget FY '25 totaling 74.5 million, which includes 52 cent tax rate. This tax rate includes 43.5 cents to support the operating budget and 8.5 cents to support the revenue savings plan, which funds the town's capital improvement projects. The recommended budget includes an eight-and-a-half cent tax increase from the revenue-neutral rate of 43.5. The FY '25 recommended budget is an ambitious and strategic budget designed to meet the town's priorities and needs for FY '25 and to position the town for success in the future. The FY '25 recommended budget is the blueprint for building for success. Annual budgets are a community's expressions of its values, priorities, and aspirations. The FY '25 budget theme of building for success aims to support and enhance Garner's values, priorities, and aspirations. We rely on a blueprint created and supported by Town Council, Town Staff, and our residents to recognize and support the town's values and priorities. Approval and implementation of this blueprint guides our talented staff in creating a strong foundation for success that directly aligns with Town Council's goals and priorities. This allows for a forward-thinking council the opportunity to invest not only in our present but in the town's future. The town of Garner is growing and is a thriving community. According to our Planning Department, our town has grown 8.4% over the past year from over 36,000 to over 39,000. With growth comes increased property values and service demand deliveries. Wake County completed its reevaluation process in January 2024. Garner saw a 54% increase in assessed property values across the town, and Wake County overall saw an increase of 51% in assessed property values. This is a direct result of the unprecedented growth the town and the county have experienced over the past several years. This level of growth has allowed the town to continue to support its staff and high-quality services and amenities for residents. This budget provides for investing in existing and new services and initiatives that continue to make Garner a great place to be. Town staff has been hard at work advancing projects identified in the 2021 Bond Program. Several roadway projects, such as the White Oak Roundabout and the Main Street Streetscape Improvements, are underway. Design work continues on a destination park at the Yergin Property in North Garner, which will host youth sports teams and tournaments, and at White Deer Park, which will see improvements in a new inclusive playground and a splash pad for kids of all ages and abilities. Staff has also been successful in securing state and federal funding earmarks of more than $6 million to support the 2021 Bond Program and facility and equipment needs for the Public Works Department. Garner's business sector continues to grow and thrive as well. Wake Med's plans for an integrated whole-person health campus in Garner's E District and the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs Medical Clinic highlight the strengths of the town's business sector and position Garner to become a healthcare hub in the region. Town investment in small business support activities, the creation of a social district, and traffic calming measures in historic downtown Garner bolster the creation of a vibrant destination in downtown. In addition, the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan and Garner Comprehensive Pedestrian Plan, both approved in FY '24, will guide our future development decisions, policies, and practices. I am proud that the recommended budget includes several new investments that help strengthen Garner's foundation and future. This includes the imagining of the town's performance merit system for employees, which allows employees to earn up to a 4% increase annually and a market adjustment of 3% that will help Garner stay competitive in the regional employment market. The FY '25 budget also includes enhanced health, dental, and vision insurance benefits at no additional cost to employees. In addition, this budget recommends a pay increase for Garner's supplemental part-time employees who are critical in keeping our park programs and town-supported events available and successful. Included in the FY '25 recommended budget is an additional 15 FTEs, four FTEs to support the town and one FTE to support the Garner Fire Rescue Department. To continue to support our growing park system and connect to our regional greenway systems, an additional two FTEs have been added to the FY '25 budget. These positions are dedicated to executing park and greenway capital projects, leveraging financial resources, and developing a long-term sustainable strategy for the Garner Park System. As a direct result of continued growth and development demands, six FTEs have been added to support development services. The inspections Department performed 43,000 inspections, a 20% increase, and issued 2,575 permits, a 10% increase in FY '24. Due to the increased workload, four FTEs for inspections, one for planning, and one for engineering have been included in the recommended budget. These positions will assist in streamlining service delivery and organizational functions to better respond to the needs of development services customers. Garner continues to support best in the safety of our residents and community. This budget includes the addition of four police corporals and one FTE for the Garner Fire Rescue Department. The additional police corporals will allow greater spend for patrol services needed for a growing community and the safety of its residents. The additional FTE for Garner Fire Rescue will support training efforts provided, to provide exceptional fire and first responder services across the town. Finally, the budget includes one FTE for communications and one for public works. These positions support ongoing functions that interact with residents. A right-of-way specialist in public works will allow the department to meet the growing demand of maintaining aesthetic and improving sightlines in many of the public right-of-way sections across town. A communication specialist will assist with connecting with the public and many of the common media platforms, providing greater community outreach and engagement with our residents. As a result of the assessed valuation, the funding to support the Penny for Parks Program implemented in FY '24 has increased from over 573,000 to $14,000. This increase will greatly assist the town in making updates and improvements to our park facilities, which are great assets to our town. Updates and improvements include playground equipment replacement, wayfinding and signage replacement and improvements, as well as repaving of trails across the park facilities. In addition to increased funding for the Penny for Parks Program, this budget includes investments in public arts and housing rehabilitation partnerships. The FY '25 budget includes seed funding for the town to support public art initiatives and continued funding to keep our residents in their homes. The town has had success in leveraging state and federal funding to improve its recreational amenities, the Garner Senior Center, and infrastructure investments in downtown Garner. These investments and new projects provide additional opportunities to leverage funding while engaging with community partners to create an inviting and thriving community. Along with supporting the town's parks, the budget continues to support maintenance, repair, and replacement of the town's infrastructure, facilities, and vehicles. The Public Facility Repair and Maintenance Perform Program supports the maintenance of town facilities and assets, while the Vehicle and Equipment Repair Program, or VERP Program, supports a strong fleet for those requiring town vehicles as part of their work. Funding to evaluate the town's growing space needs include town hall expansion and future office space have also been included as part of the perform budget in FY '25. These are critical elements that are the foundation to continue to provide high-quality services to our community. Our blueprint includes a multi-year strategy that addresses opportunities and challenges associated with the town's unprecedented growth. The tax rate includes 8.5 cents dedicated to the revenue savings plan, a new strategy that allows for greater planning, transparency, and management of capital funds. Through this approach, Garner continues to maintain well-managed fiscal policies and practices that have resulted in a continued outstanding credit rating, AAA by Standard and Poor's, and AA1 by Moody's Investor Services. We intend to maintain this fiscal strength in the upcoming years despite our growing financial needs. The investments included in the FY '25 recommended budget are building blocks for our future that create a solid foundation and support for the preparation of future funding strategies. Each one is a critical element in the success of a strategic forward-thinking community that is a great place to be. Presenting the recommended budget to the mayor and council starts the process for council's discussion and deliberations for the FY '25 budget. The council is scheduled to have a budget work session on Thursday, May 23, and a second public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, May 21. In addition, a budget comment portal is available on the town's website for resident feedback and ideas. Thank you for the opportunity to present this ambitious and strategic recommended budget. I appreciate the diligence of our dedicated department head and staff in contributing to a balanced budget while addressing service demands. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the budget team, which includes Sarah Warren, Ian Johnson, David Beck, and John Hodges, for all their efforts and dedication to develop the recommended budget. I look forward to our continued discussions on the budget as we all work to support the town's mission of fiscal responsibility, efficient and timely service delivery, orderly growth, and great quality of life. So in addition to the formal budget message this evening, working with our very talented communication staff, we have put together a short video that introduces the recommended budget to the community that we plan to post on the website and share on the page for the budget portal. So if council will allow us the premiere of our video, that'll help really help the community understand what's being proposed and how it links to direct services to the We'll just cue it up. Hi, I'm Jody Miller, interim Town Manager for the town of Garner. A town's annual budget can seem daunting, like a bunch of big numbers and complicated financial jargon, but ultimately, it's a community's expression of what it values, prioritizes, and aspires to be. Our budget team has developed a recommended budget of 74.5 million for fiscal year 2025, which begins July 1st. The proposed budget, which includes a 52 cent tax rate, invests your tax dollars in the most fiscally responsible way to honor what Garner values by prioritizing the needs of our community. It is a well-thought-out blueprint that will enable us to build for success in the years to come. Our town's population has grown 8.4% over the past year, adding more than 3,000 residents to reach a total population of over 39,000. With that growth comes increased tax base and service delivery demands. This budget provides for investment in the services, initiatives, and high-quality staff that will continue to make Garner a great place to be. As you probably know, Wake County completed its reevaluation process in January. Garner saw a 54% increase in assessed property values across the town. As a result, every penny in our tax rate brings in over $914,000 in revenue. This strong revenue base will enable the town to continue to support and invest in the safety of our residents and community. A budget proposal includes the addition of four police corporals and an additional staff member for Garner Fire Rescue to support training efforts. Our FY '25 budget proposal also sees continued focus on investing in our parks with the Penny for Parks Program. Because of the increased and assessed valuation, that penny for our parks will go quite a bit further, assisting us in replacing playground and park equipment and improving and replacing park signage and repaving park trails. To continue to support our growing park system and connect to our regional greenway systems, an additional two staff have been included in the FY '25 budget. These positions are dedicated to executing park and greenway capital projects, leveraging financial resources, and developing long-term sustainable strategy for the Garner Park System. As a direct result of our continued growth and development demands, six full-time positions have been proposed to support development services. Our inspections Department performed 43,000 inspections, a 20% increase, and issued 2,575 permits, a 10% increase in FY '24. Due to that increased workload, four staff for inspections, one for planning, and one for engineering have been included in the recommended budget. These positions will help ensure that our new development is orderly and built with safety and quality as our top priorities. To guide long-term growth and quality of life in our community, town staff have been hard at work advancing projects identified for the 2021 Bond Program. Several roadway projects, such as the White Oak Roundabout and the Main Street Streetscape Improvements, are underway. Design work continues on a destination park at the Yergin Property in North Garner, which will host youth sports teams and tournaments, and at White Deer Park, which will see improvements, including a new inclusive playground and a splash pad for kids of all ages and abilities. Staff has also been successful in securing state and federal funding earmarks of more than $6 million to support the 2021 Bond Program and facility and equipment needs for the Public Works Department. In FY '25, we propose to continue investing in our staff with a reimagining of the town's performance merit system, which allows employees to earn up to a 4% increase annually and a market adjustment of 3% that will help Garner stay competitive in the regional employment market. The FY '25 budget also includes enhanced health, dental, and vision insurance benefits at no additional cost to employees. This budget also recommends an increase to Garner's supplemental part-time staff who are critical in keeping our parks programs and town-supported events available and successful. Along with supporting the recruitment and retention of great staff, this budget prioritizes maintenance, repair, and replacement of the town's infrastructure, facilities, and vehicles. Funding to evaluate the town's growing space needs, including town hall expansion and future office space, have been included too. Our blueprint also includes a new multi-year strategy that addresses opportunities and challenges associated with the town's unprecedented growth. The tax rate includes 8.5 cents dedicated to the revenue savings plan, a strategy that will allow for greater planning, transparency, and management of capital funds. This approach will ensure that we can maintain the proved fiscal policies and practices that have resulted in the town's outstanding credit ratings. Every budget season brings its share of challenges. The investments included in the FY '24-25 recommended budget are building blocks for our future that create a solid foundation and support for the preparation of future funding strategies. Each one is a critical element in the success of a strategic forward-thinking community. Each one will help guarantee that Garner remains a great place to be. So I just, that's a new strategy that we're using this year, preparing a video that really helps explain sort of at a very high level what's being recommended and why it's being recommended. So we're excited to share that with you this evening. Be posting it on, will be posting it on our website and the budget portal as well. So I'm excited to share that with you. I also would be remiss if I didn't thank Rick Mercer and Kyle Kettler. They were the two brilliant communications staff members who helped put this video together. So with that, I present to you, council, for your discussions and continued feedback on the FY '25 budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions or take any comments that council has this evening.
Excellent, very impressive presentation here. You know I love a video, especially the drone shot, so it was great. And it had facts and figures as well. On one hand, I like to say this marks the first official day of budget season, but that's kind of like saying when you break the bottle of champagne over the ocean liner's bow, that's the day it started. No, that started way back. It built a long time. Ms. Warren and her staff have worked year-round on this budget, analyzing our needs, trying to plan. to plan, measuring what we're doing now. It's absolutely a year-round process. And this is really just a kickoff day for council. We've seen some of this. Two weeks from today, we'll have an all-day work session, and I mean work, on this. So this is just the launching of it. And then the other input from the town, from the citizens, as you mentioned, the survey and two more public hearings about this. So there'll be plenty, plenty more to learn. So that being said, I'm probably not going to ask for a lot of comment or discussion here tonight from the council members. We're just going to say thank you for this information and guide us through the rest of the process. Looks like a great adventure coming up. Okay. Well, don't forget now, we got all-day work sessions and plenty of time.
I'll have to speak loudly. Just a few very quick comments on the budget this year and past budgets, and I wrote them down so I could be brief. The budget this year after reevaluation is really highlights the importance of fiscal due diligence on the part of the town with regards to the projects we approve in the town. There are other elements we need to focus on that have become highlighted in over the past several years that we need to focus on, like workforce housing, transportation funding, and then planning. And number one, I think it's included in this budget, but one of the things we need to be aware of is we're in one of the fastest-growing salary places in the state as well, and so we also need to maintain our greatness throughout our many departments and our staff. The last point is we really also need to engage the right development partners who aren't just trying to invest in dirt in Garner, but investing in Garner and the future of Garner. Resonings shouldn't be a parade of future tax increases. We need to be approving the right kinds of projects that are going to be a net positive to the town's tax base. So we've already engaged a consultant again to look at the fiscal impact analysis. We'll be doing that throughout the year, and we've got a lot of work to do. Thank you.
That's good groundwork. Thank you for pointing us in the right direction there. So there's no particular action needed on this item tonight. This was for our information, your information, and to kick off the process. So any further comments or observations?
No. Thank you for your attention this evening, and can't wait to have our discussion on the 23rd during the budget work session.
Thanks again. And that brings us to our consent agenda, which we can usually handle fairly promptly and effectively there. These are a number of different items that staff and council has been working on for some weeks, all lumped together for one approval, if appropriate. And that being said, does any council member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda or put any aside that need further discussion? If none needs to be removed, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Matthews and a second by Ms. Behringer. All in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. That's the consent agenda. And Mr. Trezenberg is next up with a public hearing. And before we launch in this public hearing, I'm going to ask for a little suggestion from Mr. Trezenberg, who represents applicants and community both. Don't, this is a serious and complex issue coming up. Do you recommend we take a five-minute recess and push on through?
That is at your pleasure. I can be flexible with you.
Not to put any pressure on you, not to put any pressure or anything. Haven't seen anybody else sneaking out of the room, so maybe we'll just try to bear down and push on through. Okay. Okay. And let me read this about the public hearing and talk about it. The first public hearings on tonight's agenda for conditional zoning is a legislative hearing, which does not require sworn testimony. We have a different kind of hearing coming up later. However, persons interested in speaking, including the applicant, must sign up with the town clerk. Town staff will present a report, followed by the applicant, and persons supporting or opposing the application will be recognized to speak. Council requests that groups of individuals with the same position to designate a representative to speak for the group, when that makes sense. So that being said, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Trezenberg, our planning director, to give us an overview on the project before us here known as Homestead at Bryan Farm.
I apologize in advance. Ms. Joseph had hoped to be here to share some of the presentation duties tonight, but she is at home a little under the weather, so you will have me for a good chunk of the remaining items to come. But the first one here tonight is CZMP 2304, the Homestead at Bryan Farm. The applicant is Lennar Corporation. You see the owners of the property there, including the RA Bryan Farms LLC. This has been known for decades, if not more than that, as the Bryan Farm. This is a Tier 2 request. It does encompass almost 100 acres. They are asking for an R8 conditional district that could allow for up to 291 townhomes and single-family detached units. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the location. This is directly north of South Garner High School, directly across Clifford Road, and would basically fill in a gap between the Ridgemore communities, which are right here, and the associated towns at Ridgemore, and the Magnolia, no, sorry, Oak Manor project to the west of the high school, and the greenway corridor that goes through there. I'll talk a little bit more about that going forward. The current zoning, of course, is rural agricultural, recognizing the farming aspect for the property. It is quite often a holding zone until a site comes forward for some type of development. You do see still a mix of some R2, some other R4, largely the result of recent rezonings. And there is and has historically been some commercial zoned here along Bryan Road. This plan does not fall within an activity center. It is on the edge of a neighborhood activity center, which is largely centered kind of on the south side of what will be the White Oak Roundabout. So anticipating that there may be enough of a push in this area with White Oak Road in particular, as well as Hebron going down to the high school and back, that this could support some mixed level of activity going forward. Again, as I noted, the requested rezoning is an R8 conditional, narrowing it down to just the two uses of townhouse and single-family detached, with the maximum density not exceeding 3.12 dwelling units per acre. In terms of some of their other conditions that they have proposed thus far, I will note that we are continuing to work as staff, and that's part of the reason you see a recommendation for continuance, which I will come back to. Given, given the council's extensive discussions around townhouses, particularly with the Park at Garner Station project, staff and the applicant are both working towards getting these conditions further developed. But we are at a point where the applicant is wanting to get some high-level feedback from the council. This has been in for review kind of prior to us starting our new process of the kind of one-on-one or two-on-one meetings, which the applicant, again, is open to having those as well, should the council desire. But just to highlight a little bit of plan, they took their, again, in the, in the new comprehensive plan, this is identified as neighborhoods. As you may recall, our neighborhood designation doesn't specify the type of neighborhood, but does ask generally for you to take your cues from what surrounds you. There is single-family detached to the north and townhomes, roughly kind of splitting along an east-west divide where this utility easement, transmission easement takes place. So they did initially here propose that they would do much the same. So you see here, single-family detached, organized around some green spaces, as well as connections through, trying to give everybody good access. And then you have townhomes here on the other side relating to the townhomes to the north and across from the high school. Again, the greenway path connecting between from Ridgemore out here to Clifford Road, where you can pick up the greenway in the Oak Manor subdivision, which will take you all the way to Swift Creek. I will say that development of this property, whenever it happens, will allow for, I think we measured it out, it would probably be just over two miles of linked public greenway. In terms of just some general data, again, there are 9.92 acres of open space required. They are well exceeding that. Two rather large preservation areas of trees. Some of this is steeper than others, but there is some other, you know, fairly flat areas here adjacent to the easement. So they are well exceeding that, and they do have a combination of conservation and recreation space. They do still have to meet that 25% active space requirement that is in our new UDO. Property is not within a watershed protection area, but it still will be subject to our water quality, which is nitrogen counts and quantity requirements. They are currently proposing one large stormwater management structure. They would be connecting to new water from the Ridgemore community, and it would go all the way through and connect into existing water at Clifford, and the sewer lines would be extended per policy as well. They were required to submit a TIA to the town and NCDOT. This was completed in June of 2023. You see the trips expected and generated there. Given the amount of work that is happening in the area, apart from adequate storage getting into their subdivision from both Hebron Church and Clifford, there were no additional improvements identified by NCDOT. I will note that this project is in the benefit area for the White Oak-Bryan improvements that Pulte is doing as part of the Cambria development, and this project would be required to contribute their portion to those efforts as well. Existing streams and associated buffers, there are some along the northern and western sides of the property. There is an existing pond, which is a farm pond, that is going to be drained. The public greenway is proposed somewhat within the utility easement, not completely. That does bisect the site. And I will point out that the Bryan Farm Homestead, it is of an age that qualifies for potential historic designation. It is not, to my knowledge, historically designated actually, but it is eligible. They will be preserving that house, and it is proposed to remain in its current location. In terms of neighborhood meetings, there were 126 surrounding properties and occupants notified, the first meeting being on June 26, and the second meeting here on January 23 of this year. You see the attendance there, and the full meeting information is attached to your staff report. Coming back to the framework again, you see that this is a neighborhood designation. Neighborhoods can take many forms, so it's really up to the town to decide what kind of neighborhood we want this to be. We do get a little bit of indication here from the development intensity map that it should not be substantially different than what currently surrounds it. That is a Level 2. So Ms. Joseph has taken a look at reviewing this project, where it stands today in terms of the growth, in terms of the framework from the Comprehensive Growth Plan. She was able to evaluate 18 of those criteria in the framework, and you see that split there. We have nine currently strongly consistent, but also four strongly inconsistent. So there is probably some work that can be done to swing that pendulum a little bit further. Currently, there is no identified playground feature, although there are open fields. In terms of the land use and community character consistency, again, we were able to take a look at that. I think that should be 20 criteria determined applicable or possible to meaningfully address. It's in the 20s. And it's currently very divided. You see here some blue and some red as well. Some of the things that they could perhaps strengthen between now and a subsequent decision to forward this to Planning Commission, they could work on enhancing their street frontages, using the open space a little bit better to create a stronger central focal point for the neighborhood. This is interesting site because it is divided by a fairly large easement, so they have kind of given a good centralized feel or a decent centralized feel to both portions of the site, but it's possible maybe that they could actually reconfigure it a little bit to create more of a central, central location for the whole site. And then proffering some additional conditions that may speak more directly to some of the recommendations in the plan. Again, this plan is still fairly new for some folks, and we're taking a stronger look at that. So overall, we do recommend that there is some additional fine-tuning and, and changes that need to happen, but that full detail of the current review is attached to your staff report. So in terms of next steps, we do need to finish conducting and continuing the public hearing. We do have the recommendation to continue it tonight. The applicant does have a presentation that they would like to give shortly here to you, but we are looking to receive feedback from yourselves and from the community, and also to sense if, if there's a desire for you to meet in the smaller groups with the applicant, so that date can be set as needed. And so staff is ready to work with the applicant based on tonight's discussions and also the past discussions about townhouse characteristics. So with that, that is what I have to present for you tonight on behalf of the staff, and again, the applicant is here to give you a short presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Trezenberg, and I thank you also for giving us the heads-up that your recommendation is to continue this public hearing to another date, so you probably will not be asking council for a decision on what to do tonight. Basically, we have two, two options. We can either continue it, as you suggested, or we could refer it on to the Planning Commission for further review. But I'd like your attention to detail and the ability to do some other things that might improve the project. So with that being said, yes, let's hear from the applicant, and then we'll see if we have some other questions and comments from council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Collier Marsh with Parker Poe at 301 Fayetteville Street here on behalf of the applicant. I have a number of members of our development team here as well. I have Tucker Ennis with Lennar, Jesse Hardisty with McAdams, Mark Frederick with my office, Nate Boquin with McAdams, and Nick Williamson also with McAdams. So we've got a full team to answer any questions that may come up. I also appreciate Jeff's presentation, giving the full context of this project. We're one of those cases, you're going to see a couple of them over the next few months, where we're caught a little bit in the transition between Comprehensive Plan and the new adoption that came in November and now staff's implementation. We filed back in June and went through three rounds of review under the old Comprehensive Plan, but then in this last round of review, when we got comments last week, it was the new plan, and it was that kind of red, blue, gray consistency analysis that the council saw tonight. So we saw that for the first time last week and coordinated with staff and agreed we can work together to address some of those colors, and are happy to do it. So we look at tonight as an opportunity to give you all a preview of the project, talk about some of the high notes, and then absorb as much feedback as possible so that we can take advantage over the next couple of days to weeks to make the necessary changes and come back. If I can click forward. All right, we turned it on. So this is the site and surrounding area for context. It's about a 99-acre site. I think we're all familiar with a lot of projects that have, have been in this area, and there's a lot of town transportation improvements that are going on as well, as well as the signal improvements that are a private, I guess, effort coordinated and helped with the town that this project would contribute towards. One clarifying point I did want to make on transportation is that the TIA did actually call for a signal if approved by DOT at either end of Clifford Drive. So there's two locations where if signal warrants require it, there would be a traffic signal that would require it as part of this project. As Mr. Trezenberg covered, we are designated as a neighborhood in the new comprehensive we are designated as a neighborhood in the new comprehensive plan. And then the development intensity map calls it for it as an area to strengthen. We interpret it to kind of look at the surrounding development for guidance as to how the project should develop. And so this is our master plan. There's a lot of boxes and notes. But just to hit some of the high notes, and Jeff covered it pretty well. When we looked at this site, we looked through the two existing phases of Ridgemore immediately to the north for guidance as to how the site should lay out because we do have a power line easement running directly through the site, essentially bisecting it into two pieces, which does make it difficult to create that central space between the two areas. So we've looked at it as kind of two components of one neighborhood that could be compatible with the surrounding area. On the left-hand side, you have single-family homes that match the single-family homes to the north. On the right-hand side, you have townhomes that match the development style intensity of the townhomes to the north. Within each area, we've then tried to incorporate open space to serve those corresponding sections. I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. The colors, just for reference, the purple color on the left-hand side are the single-family detached. On the right-hand side, you have pink and yellow. Those mark two different townhome types. So one would be a 22-foot wide and the other 26-foot wide. Those allow to hit different price points within one community. You also see a number of different colors. There's purple lines going through it. Those would be private greenway trails. And then the bright green going through the power line easement is that greenway connection that allows that two miles of continuous greenway connectivity in the immediate area. We're also preserving that existing house. I'm sure anybody that's driven by recognize it. It's quite attractive. And so that was not originally considered with this project, but after the first neighborhood meeting, we quickly made the change and said, okay, that's going to be preserved. We'll design around it. And it would be actually included as part of this neighborhood as far as the HOA is concerned to ensure compatibility. But it obviously wouldn't meet new architectural guidelines and would stay as is. We went to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee early on in this project and got some good feedback from Mr. Dellinger and Mr. Singleton about open space and the needs within the area. And just wanted to highlight the open space in this project because I don't think we did the project justice at that last juncture. You don't have to squint your eyes too hard to see all of the open space within this project. Roughly half of this site will be one form of open space or another. And so that includes large areas of preserved trees up in the northern section of the site. You obviously have the power line easement, which I guess gives us the benefit of a lot of open space. But not to be lost in it is feedback we've heard from council on the need to provide active open space within this site. And so this slide is meant to emphasize the active open space that's provided within each section. Again, knowing the need to provide these centralized spaces. But as we've heard over and over, we need to make sure that our spaces are actually usable. And so a lot of times, we've heard from council feedback that we want to see at least a 10,000-square-foot open playfield. Where are the kids actually going to play? You can put benches in the gazebo, but if there's no actual room for kids to play, they're going to end up running in the street. They're going to go in that power line easement. And we don't really want them playing under the power lines. And so we've tried to show where that's possible on this site in both areas of the neighborhood. So there's areas that are suitable within the single-family detached section. So this is just a zoomed-in shot of those. I think our measurements are pretty conservative with the actual acreage, but we use as a point of reference that space to the north. That shows a U-10 soccer field. So when we get feedback, we want to see at least 10,000 square feet. That rectangle that we stuck in there is about 19,800 square feet within an overall 30,000-square-foot area. So about three times the size of what's typically been asked to do. And then the other pocket park to the south is about 9,000 square feet. The same is true for that townhome section. There are meaningful and usable open spaces. Again, we have Pocket Park E, where we've used, again, a U-10 soccer field to show this is genuinely usable open space of similar size to a soccer field. And then you add up all those other open spaces, some of them more for walking, friendly uses, and then the main amenity of the neighborhood. And so this is a rendering of the main amenity of this neighborhood. This was done for this project to give you a good idea of what we're envisioning here. Saw a comment that there's no firm commitment for a playground. So that's an easy red mark that we can check moving to the next round, that that is something that we can commit to and have been envisioning all along. So we've got your pool, cabana, and restroom facilities all as commitments of this rezoning. Got a number of zoning conditions. I don't need to go through them all in detail. I'm sure we're going to be working on them and making them even better before we see you again. You have your typical permitted use restrictions, a density limit, and then commitments to the amenities just to be sure that we're delivering what we're showing in those pictures. We've got extensive architectural conditions. I think, looking a few months back, this was, you know, checking every box that we've done on previous projects in the area. But we now, I think, have shared observations with council of toured projects where we've learned over time that as sites are developed, there are details that weren't picked up. And now that we know how projects layout, we can do better. And so we're going to work with staff. We know what's needed here. And we'll come back with a list that, although this is lengthy for architectural conditions, I imagine we'll have quite a few more to check all the appropriate boxes. And that just leaves us with some renderings of the actual product types. This is a project, again, proposed by Lennar. We know exactly what we're going to be building here, not leaving it out for future market participants to decide. So this shows examples of the single-family products and the townhome products that we're envisioning here, some of which do feature first-floor bedrooms and suites. So there are those included within this development. With that, as I said, we've got a number of members of our team here. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, this probably is a good point to see if council members have some questions or comments they'd like to take up with Mr. Marsh.
Yes, Mr. Marsh. Questions reference to the historical, to the house itself. Has it been considered for historical designation? Do you have any idea? Is that something that's left to the property owner?
Yeah, as a team, we haven't done that. I think that it's theoretically eligible. We have not advanced any further study. Our plan would be to incorporate it into the HOA, make it part of the covenants, and sell it to a family that can use it as their primary residence.
Okay, so it'll be up to the HOA to make the consideration, whether to consider it or to go through process?
Ultimately, it would be up to that owner of the property.
Owner of the property?
Yes.
Okay, so who's the owner of the property?
So right now, it's the selling party of the property as a whole. Lennar would acquire the entire site and then develop out the subdivision.
Okay, I guess I'm asking, if this is approved, will that property still remain with the owner or will it be a part of this development?
Part of this development.
Okay, so it sounds like it'd be development who would be looking for that potential historical designation.
I guess it would be possible through the developer.
In reference to the density, I noticed that there are a lot of townhomes on here, which the percentages are much larger than the single-family homes. And if you go down that corridor, Hebron Church Road, I think it is, the Hebron Church Road, there is a corridor, a line of townhomes that are all the way down that corridor. And one concern I have is that the number of townhomes that we have versus the number of single-family homes. And it appears that it may be a possibility of working at reconfiguring to reduce that density. Possibly, but right now, you're looking at roughly 60% townhomes. Hold on a second. Let's see, 70% townhomes and 30% of single-family homes. If the consideration of reducing the density of the townhomes to, say, 40% and increasing the single-family to 60%, which means that you have to reconfigure the current site plan, is something that I would like to see possibly considered, okay?
Yeah, we were happy to discuss these and work through the site plan to see what makes sense here.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
You mentioned the transition on the comprehensive plan, but you're firmly in the new UDO, is that correct?
Correct.
So by right, with the rural agricultural, you could build 99 homes on the property.
An analysis, but take for it, yeah.
I think it's too dense for down there. It's so built up down there already. And when you look at the R8 district, it kind of explicitly says a dense residential district with urban character and potentially a mix of low-impact nonresidential and mixed-use structures at select locations, very walkable and/or transition to other commercial or mixed use. I get the sense you only went to R8 so you could get the townhomes in because it's actually the lowest threshold. You could go on R1, 2, 4, 8 is where the townhomes kick in. But it doesn't really meet the character of what's envisioned in the UDO for R8. So that kind of is a red flag to me because there is no other commercial down here. Yet R8 is sort of calling for even the option of having some nonresidential uses. So I think it's too dense. I think an R4 would be more appropriate. I actually would go with RA. I actually would like to see some other stuff. But I just think that it's too dense. It's not dense for an R8, but it's dense for the residential that's down there. I just have, and then the comprehensive plan also, you have level two, but it's also looking for enhancement to the area. You know, 20, some years ago, there were 20,000 people in Garner. In the next few years, there'll be 20,000 people just down 50 White Oak, Hebron Church, and New Bethel. And there's no commercial opportunity down there. Container Park or something, something neighborhood where then people could walk over to Meadowbrook. So all these rooftops of half-million-dollar houses, and they've got Ford Highway 50 and White Oak Road to hang out with folks. So it's, again, it's too dense. It doesn't really meet that threshold for the enhancement level and potential commercial uses that are small. So I have a lot of just concerns with the townhomes and the R8 as a threshold. And the TIA, I have a question about the TIA. And it said it may warrant signalization and stuff, and they were giving impacts on surrounding roads. What are the traffic counts for New Bethel, Hebron, Bryan Road?
Nate Boquin, Traffic Engineer with McAdams. So are you looking for the, like, the daily volume along those roads? Let me flip to that. Church Road, for the daily volumes, we based that off of the most recent data that's published by NCDOT. At the time that we completed the study, it was 2021 volumes. So New Bethel Church, it was 2,800 vehicles per day. Clifford Road was 1,100 vehicles per day. Hebron Church was 2,600.
What year was that data from?
2021. That's more so just a point of reference. The actual analysis that we utilize in the TIA is new traffic counts that we conduct. And that's, we conducted counts in May of 2023.
Thank you. That's all I have for right now.
You know, we are navigating new territory from what we have done in the past and doing it very quickly. I would have to agree that the density is a little much, especially on the townhomes. But I think it's something that we need to continue discussing because it's just not real, I'm not real comfortable with it yet. I don't want to say, no, take it away. But I would like to see a little more work done on it. And that traffic counts, 2021 traffic counts are just not applicable today. We've grown so much, so we need some more definite numbers there.
And just to be clear, I think the counts that actually were used in our analysis of what improvements are required are from May of '23. It's just measuring different things than the average daily trip.
Just a couple of things that what we're seeing now with so many of our new developments coming in, times are changing, and we understand that. But with all this done there, so many of our new developments now, we're looking at a portion, and it might be kind of tie, could tie in with this, with a small commercial section of it. It could be coffee shops, different things that would most certainly blend in with that area. And with all the growth down there, that most certainly would be very successful. But that's something I truly like to see, rather than just homes, homes, homes. We need that commercial, because nothing down in there right now, other than the little convenience store where the roundabout is up there. I like to see, after touring so many places, a variety of colors, not just tan and white. Me and Mr. Behringer rode around one day, and I said, boy, we should see some color right here. This is just, you know, so something to think about. And I'm looking forward to what we call our two-on-one meetings because that's where we can get in depth and talk about these things in detail. And rather than that we, when you start making your plan again, you know what we're looking for because we're just, we want to most certainly work with our developers, but we want a good product that we can be proud of and as everybody's seeing now, and with a good variety. And so that two-in-one meetings, Mr. Mayor, I am definitely looking forward to that because those are quite informative, and it'll help you guys as well as us. So we're not bad guys here. We're just looking for a really nice product that we can be proud of, that you can be proud of.
We're looking forward to it as well.
I'd just like to tag on to Councilmember Matthew's comments. I've forgotten about the color. It's been a few weeks ago. But color, brightness makes people smile. And gray and blue are easy to do, and they match a whole lot, but they don't make you real happy. And we need to be thinking about that, too. I saw on a trip to Ireland last fall, I saw public housing that had art in between the floors facing out so that when you looked at these buildings, they didn't look drab and horrible. They made you smile, made you have a better outlook on it. And the other thing, too, Mr. Matthews mentioned about commercial. You've got a high school close by, and as soon as the bell rings and the kids head out the door, they're heading straight for food. So there's something to consider there. You know, we want to make sure if we have some commercial and we have some places for them to stop and eat, that it's not overwhelming and that it doesn't create more traffic issues, but meets a need.
Thank you. Mr. Marsh, I think you can see that our council members have gotten more and more interested in the details of many of these developments, particularly key ones like this. That 100 acres, that's the magic one. Across from the high school, that's a big factor. It's geographically virtually in the center of the area that's been described there, where there's not one piece of commercial, not one food store, not a coffee shop, not an ice cream. Nothing that a kid can ride his bicycle to and get a drink or a snack. So be thinking about that. Everybody has great comments. All of those things are critical. I'm so glad you've decided to slow the roll just a little bit here, get more input, refine this. I'll just mention one other aspect of this that hasn't been mentioned. While we're painting our little picture of what we'd like to see, this project is directly across Hebron Church Road from the town soon-to-be park at Meadowbrook. And if you could figure out a way to let your residents and some of your neighbors use a multi-use path to collect at that point, cross the road. Maybe there's a little parking lot or access area over there at Meadowbrook. And so as a town that figures this passive use, which that's what it's going to be for some time to come, where it's not suitable for soccer fields and ball fields, at least not in our generation. So it'll be a passive use, and that can be a real compliment for your residents and all your neighbors if you can figure out a way to give them some access over there. I feel the town will be able to find a way to cooperate and enhance that. So just planting another seed. So we're excited to be working with Lennar, one of the premier home builders in America. And Collier, you certainly have gotten to know Garner and our UDO. This has earmarks of greatness, maintaining the home. The potential this here in so many ways, we just want Lennar to go back and pull out their very best models from their catalog because they got them from the greatest to the not-quite-as-great. And let's aim high on this, and let's put your best foot forward. Let this be your showcase, not only in Garner, not only in Wake County, but for the whole region. There's potential here for greatness. So I applaud you taking your time. We want to work with you. And so that concludes our comments and questions. Do you have any more?
Further, looking forward to further discussion with the council.
Thank you. Now, we want to recognize any individuals who have signed up to speak. And I'll ask our town clerk, have we have some people signed up?
We did not have any members of the public to sign up.
Okay, okay. Well, there's plenty of opportunity for that. Thank you for being here. We really respect the residents out there. You've seen radical change in the last decade or so out there. And this is, in my point, in my idea, this is a real turning point, this one. This is at a crossroads. This can either take us upwards, where something, we say, ooh, there is something in this for me, or we just say, oh, no, more of the same. But I think this is one where many of the residents could see something here. They say, oh, now that was something that we're all benefiting from, with access to the park, the little coffee shop, ice cream shop, sandwich shop, combination, whatever it is, that there's ways here that you can really make some friends. So I'm excited about that. That, that being said, I believe the next order of business is to ask for a motion to continue the public hearing to May 21st.
So move.
There, there's a, a motion by Mr. Vence.
May 21st.
Excuse me?
If I may, I might offer, given the breadth of the comments, that perhaps we continue it to the June 18th meeting, just because I think there's a lot that needs to happen. That would at least give us a good opportunity to have some of those discussions and just at least have that as a, as a touch point on the calendar, if you're amenable.
I like that a lot. I would just read it off the page, but thank you, Mr. Treisenberg. Mr. Marsh?
Would there be an opportunity at the first meeting in June? I've, I've got another council meeting on that night. Want to make sure I can attend.
We'll give you a two-for-one if you come.
That'd be the fourth?
Does push it a little bit longer.
June 4th is fuller.
June 4th. I like really paying attention on this one. If there's any way we, we'll, we'll come early and stay late for you, for you, Collier.
We've got a deep bench, so if, if, we'll, we'll stick with the 18th and make sure that everything's all set before then, if needed.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you for your flexibility. Thanks, thanks for working with us on this. I think it'll be worthwhile. I think it'll be worthwhile to pay attention. Thank you. Okay. So in that case, is there an amendment to the motion to continue the hearing to June 18th?
Yes.
There is, and the second still stands. Okay? So the motion is to continue this public hearing until June 18th. It's been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay, it carries unanimously. Well, thank you very much for your attention on this very important project here. We look forward to working with, with a great outfit on that and a great neighborhood. Mr. Treisenberg, did you have any other comments or actions over there? Well, now, we do have several other items on the agenda, but I'm going to go ahead and be so forth, forthright as to say, let's take a 10-minute recess, look at the clock on that wall, not at the clock on my wrist, and be back by 8:20, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, for that tone. That means it's time to reconvene, get back to work in here. Thanks for your patience. Thanks for sticking with us. We're going to review a special use permit on Burnett Farms Apartments. And it's important for me to read all this disclaimer here about the difference between the previous legislative hearing, which was a rezoning, versus a quasi judicial hearing that has to do with a special use permit. This case involves an application for special use permits which requires a quasi judicial hearing. Each council member is required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change at any ex parte communications, any close familial business, or other associational relationships with an affected person or financial interest in the outcome of the case. This is a fact finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses, based on training and experience, may testify as to the impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise level. Council members must disclose discussions pertaining to the case or any information received outside of the hearing. The property was considered at prior council members in conjunction with rezoning and special use permit decisions. Do any council members have any additional disclosures of ex parte communications? And that's a negative, okay? All persons wishing to testify or provide comments must be sworn in by the town clerk, and in just a moment, we'll do that. The staff report is offered as evidence in the case, and will be accepted into the record unless an objection is raised by the applicant or another person with standing. So that being said about the swearing in, town clerk, how would you like to handle this swearing in? Have them come to you back there? Okay. So that's to anyone wishing to testify or provide comments. Will need to be sworn in by the town clerk in the back corner of the room there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, while they're going through that, just to disclose for the record, there was an email received from a citizen regarding this project. So in compliance with state law, we're disclosing that as part of the record.
And our presenter from our planning department is Mr. Joe Linsky.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and nice to see you, council members. I'm here tonight to present a special use site plan for Burnett Farms Apartments, SUP SP 2301. The applicant is Madison Holdings LLC. The owner is ITAC 356 LLC, and the request is for an approval of maximum 348 multifamily triplex or higher, including apartment, household living units at 4100 Auburn Knightdale Road. This project was rezoned last year as a part of CZMP 2201, which also included town homes as well. That was done through a staff approval because it did not meet the threshold for an SUP. So this is only for the apartments, and the current zoning is multifamily B C 258. And the current uses are vacant and agricultural uses on the property. Around there is a mix of R4 and R2, including RA as well, and the Auburn Village neighborhood is immediately to the southwest of the property. Water and sewer are available, and the future NC 540 ramp will be on Rock Quarry Road nearby. Some of the conditions outlined in the rezoning process for the amenities included the clubhouse and health club, the swimming pool area and outdoor space included with that, the play lawn and the landscaped dog park, each with certain size requirements that were reviewed during the site plan process. In addition, there were architectural requirements that were reviewed for the buildings, including several of them, including the materials and masonry requirement. No vinyl was allowed, offsets in the horizontal facades were required, and along with frontage requirements on which way the buildings could be oriented, and then there had to be a range of different building types that included different sizes and apartment quantities or units per building. So this was reviewed under the old ordinance, but this is how it lines up with our current comprehensive plan. The site does fall within a neighborhood activity center as well as a community activity center. You'll see that in the framework image below on the bottom left. The character, land character type, is a mixed use typology, and the development density calls for a level four, a low rise area for transformation. The neighborhood meeting was held March 25, 2024, at the Best Western and had six people in attendance, and your packet should have the neighborhood meeting packet included in there. Here's the site plan, including some of the amenity areas that were outlined on the previous slide. It does also include the existing pond, which was qualified for the open space requirements. This total site for the apartments is 18.6 acres. Of the entire rezoned area was 46 acres for reference, and this includes 11 apartment buildings, one clubhouse, and four parking garages. And you'll also see on the right-hand side, the new public street with the roundabout that's proposed. Going back to the open space, the requirement was 1.86 acres and 3.40 were proposed, and included a combination of conservation areas and recreation spaces, as mentioned with the play lawn, dog park, and amenities center, along with the pond, which includes a walking trail around it. For stormwater, it is not located within the watershed protection area and does meet the requirements for nitrogen and accounting for the 110 and 25-year storm events. They will be utilizing the four retention ponds as part of the townhome development to account for the stormwater here. The landscape and buffers, there's a seven-and-a-half-foot buffer required per the old UDO. There's a 50% reduction that was applied. Street trees are along the entire street frontage on Auburn Knightdale and the new street that's proposed, and the tree canopy coverage does meet our requirements with the mix of both preservation and new plantings to be provided in the buffers and interior on the site. The plan does meet the requirements of the UDO for site lighting to provide the minimum foot candles for all pedestrian areas. For parking, the applicant did request a reduction that is permissive or permitted in the UDO Section 74C that does allow up to a 25% reduction. They were asking for a 15% reduction. It does still meet the minimums per the new UDO either way, but they were originally required for 720 and are proposing 603 with that reduction. They did meet the fire access requirements and provided a turn radius exhibit for emergency vehicles. In terms of utilities, there's an existing 16-inch water main along Auburn Knightdale, and the sewer will be coming extending from Auburn Village next door. In terms of transportation, the TIA was not required, or ATIA was not required for this project as it was for the rezoning. That's where all the traffic counts were accounted for. You'll see there is on Rock Quarry Road improvements that are proposed there, or excuse me, along Auburn Knightdale Road, there's a two full access driveways and a, excuse me, three-lane major collector road with curb and gutter and a 10-foot multi-use path provided along the frontage of the property. Fall within any FEMA-designated floodplains, and there are no cultural resources identified. The pond will remain on the site as, again, counting towards that open space requirement. Looking at the building design, the applicant did provide facades for each of the different buildings and tables showing that it met the requirements for the zoning, detailing the materials and the transparency as well. TRC finding of consistency with regulations of the UDO, so long as the following conditions are applied and adhered to. Most of these are standard, but here for your review. And the next step would be a motion after review with the applicant. I'm here for any questions, if you have any.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Linsky?
Questions. The elevations are provided. These are three-story, they're multiple sizes. They're three-story apartments. Is that correct?
Correct.
I don't recall, but in the, they required, or did they, not required, did they volunteer to add elevators to those in their rezoning?
That I'm not 100% sure of at the moment. I don't know. Jeff's going to look into that.
Okay. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linsky. I guess at this time, too, we would like to recognize the applicant to provide a presentation. Would introduce yourself, name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gupsten, members of the town council. My name is Chad Essick. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Porter Spruill, 301 Fayetteville Street, Suite 1900. Here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Madison Holding, in connection with this quasi judicial hearing and this special use permit application for the development of the Burnett Farms Apartments. As Mr. Linsky noted, this site is approximately 18 and 1/2 acres of a larger 45-acre tract along Auburn Knightdale Road, near the intersection with Rock Quarry Road. As staff also noted, and you may recall, this 45 acres was rezoned in January of last year pursuant to a master plan that proposed up to 125 townhome units and 350 multifamily units. Subsequent to that rezoning, Madison Holdings purchased the property from Burnett Farms LLC, who is the property owner that owns much of the acreage to the east and to the south of Auburn Knightdale Road. Consistent with the approved master plan, the townhome portion of the development was administratively approved for 95 townhomes, less than the 125 that were allowed as part of the rezoning. And what's before you tonight, as has been outlined, is the special use permit for the multifamily portion, since the UDO requires that for residential projects that exceed 200 units. As will be pointed out, the proposed plan is virtually identical to what was set forth in the master plan that was approved back in January of 2023. Joining me here tonight to provide testimony and evidence in connection with the SUP application and the standards for review, Beth Blackman, Senior Project Manager with the Timmins Group. She is the consulting engineer on the project. Beth will provide testimony concerning the specifics of the proposed development, including site design, layout, overall compliance with the town's UDO and related policies and plans. Also joining us tonight is Jeff Hockendell, Transportation Engineer of the Timmins Inter Group. Jeff did the traffic impact analysis for the overall project during the rezoning and can provide testimony regarding the transportation improvements that were recommended by NC DOT, and that will be made in connection with the project, and can certainly answer any questions related to that. And finally, Stephen Peeden will testify. He's a principal with Avison &amp; Young, an international real estate services firm. He has extensive experience with the real estate market in Garner, as well as the Triangle generally. He'll provide testimony and his opinion regarding the positive impacts the proposed project will have on the adjoining and appropriate, adjoining and abutting property values, which is also a standard set forth in your ordinance. Also, I will point out here tonight are David and Daniel Smoot, principals of the applicant, Madison Holding. Also here is Mary Grady Bell and her husband Vic Bell and Battle Koontz. Mary Grady and Battle are the principals of Burnett Farms, who own the vacant land that adjoins and abuts this property to the east and to the south. They're not here to provide testimony, but they are here in support of this proposed project. We also have other members of the development team here tonight who are able to answer questions that the council members may have. Of course, we want to be respectful of the council's time tonight, but I'll have these folks come up and provide testimony and evidence concerning the project to address those eight standards. And then, once they're completed, Mayor, I'll maybe have a few remarks to kind of tie some of that evidence to the standards, maybe after any one from the public has an opportunity to speak. So, Mayor, with that, I'll call first witness, Ms. Blackman from the Timmins Group.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm glad to be here. I'm Beth Blackman, Senior Project Manager with Timmins Group, Consulting Engineer for the project, 5410 Trinity Road, Suite 102, Raleigh. Graduated from NC State University and have over 20 years of experience in residential projects of all size, and I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina. So I'm the lead engineer for this project. I oversaw the rezoning. I was here before y'all with the rezoning, the design and layout of the site plan, and we've worked through this over the past several years. So the site is 18.6 acres, portion of the larger 45-acre tract. The apartment portion has frontage on Auburn Knightdale Road, as well as the internal proposed streets that are being constructed as part of the Burnett Farms Townhome subdivision, located more north and west of this site. Further west of the townhome subdivision are single-family homes, and this, we believe this creates an appropriate transition from the Auburn Village, single-family, to the townhomes, then to the multifamily, then to the vacant, about 20-acre parcel on the corner of Auburn Knightdale Road and Rock Quarry Road. And that was intended on your land use plan for like future commercial mixed-use areas. So there are 348 apartments in 11 buildings, along with the clubhouse and the four garage buildings, as been mentioned earlier. It's very similar to the master plan rezoning that was approved in January of 2023, with just slightly less units being proposed than what was allowed under the rezoning. Stormwater control measures are being shared with the subdivision. As noted in the staff report, the stormwater control measures proposed, including the nitrogen offset payment, will satisfy all water quality and quantity requirements for the site for nitrogen and detain the 110 and 25-year storms. The site is not located in any watershed protection or any FEMA floodplains, and there is no significant adverse impacts on the natural environment as a result of the proposed use. Tree canopy coverage is being met through preservation and replacement as in conjunction with the subdivision, and street trees, buffers, and landscaping are meeting all the UDO requirements. Public water and sewer is adjacent to the site in Auburn Knightdale Road and Auburn Village, and it's adequate to serve the site while maintaining adequate levels of service for the existing development in the area. The proposed townhome subdivision will extend utilities to the apartment site. The apartment site will have 603 parking spaces, as we discussed earlier, with that 15% reduction, but that does meet the current parking requirements in the new UDO, which lessened parking requirements, seeing that we had a little too much parking in some of these cases. Off-frontage and off-site road improvements will be completed by the townhome subdivision. And as it relates to public safety, the site has been designed to accommodate fire truck and emergency vehicle turning movements and provides three connections to the public streets in the subdivision, which then lead out to Auburn Knightdale Road. And the proposed uses comply with the zoning that was approved for this property in 2023. And the recently updated 2023 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan shows this area as mixed-use area with a neighborhood activity center and a slightly overlapping community activity center closer to NC 540. The site is a very small portion of the neighborhood activity center, but all together with the proposed townhomes and the remaining future development area will include a mixture of uses and development intensities. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan includes a collector street from Auburn Knightdale Road to Wall Store Road. This is actually located in the area of Auburn Village, but as part of the rezoning for Burnett Farms, that was shifted into this development more where the blue star would be. And so that connection is being provided as part of the townhome subdivision to the rear property line of the, near the creek, and that would then eventually extend to Wall Store Road when property behind that develops. And this collector road, like I said, is part of the townhome subdivision adjacent to the apartment site. The transportation plan also shows future sidewalks and a proposed greenway along Big Branch Creek. A multi-use path is included, proposed by the townhome subdivision along Auburn Knightdale Road, as well as they will be building a portion of the greenway along the creek. The zoning that was approved included architectural guidelines as well as amenity requirements. The proposed apartment site plan complies with the zoning conditions with 150 by 75 play lawn, a 4,120-square-foot dog park, a 7,600-square-foot clubhouse, and then a pool area with over 11,000 square feet of swimming pool deck and terrace areas, as well as lawn area, which is not included in that number. Overall, 1.86 acres of open space is required, and the site includes 3.4 acres, including the natural area where the walking trail around the existing pond and the wetlands. So although the SUP is not being reviewed under the current UDO, the active open space on this site does meet current UDO requirements. The second image on this page, this slide, shows the sidewalks connecting all the buildings and amenities on the apartment site. So the red sidewalks are everything on the apartment site. The orange sidewalks are along the public streets being built by the townhome, and then they will connect to allow, you know, plenty of interconnectivity. Then the blue along Auburn Knightdale Road is the multi-use path, and then the green is the walking trail along the natural area around the existing pond and the wetland area. As Joseph said, building elevations were included as part of the site plan. The largest, I've included one example building, so this is three sides of one example. The largest image show how the apartments would look from Auburn Knightdale Road, meeting the zoning condition to not have any breezeway openings along public streets. And so then the side and interior front, the side that would front the parking lot, has been shown as well. And then I've included two sides of the clubhouse, and these are the sides that would be most visible from the roundabout and then the public streets. And as these elevations demonstrate, along with the transition of uses from west to east along Auburn Knightdale Road, the proposed multifamily use is compatible with adjacent uses in terms of building scale, site design, and buffering and screening. I did add a note, elevators were not a zoning condition in our original rezoning. The site's rezoning in January of 2023 to allow for townhomes and apartments was found consistent with the town's adopted plans, Garner Forward Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the Transportation Plan, the Parks and Recreation, Greenways, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. As noted throughout the staff report, the apartment site remains consistent. As noted throughout the staff report, the apartment site remains consistent with the town's adopted plans, policies, and regulations, including the newly adopted 2023 Garner Forward Plan. And thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Blackman?
Quick question on the applicant. There's sort of been a change in perspective on elevators, and this relates to, actually, to be specific, the special use permits, numbers four and six, adopted plans and intent. I think I've come to the conclusion that a lack of elevators in apartments is inherently detrimental for people with mobility challenges. And as of 2023, it's hard. Pause, because I think by accident runs counter to statements in our comp plan related to inclusiveness and So, that's my comp.
I don't know that I have a, the North Carolina Housing Code does not require elevators, and so, that is how generally apartment complexes have been designed to date, unless you go into taller buildings.
Possible. Again, that's just my
Nothing wrong there.
Mr. Hockenado will be next.
Thank you, Beth. Someday, everybody's going to say my name right. Jeff Hockenado, worked with Timmins Group, 5410 Trinity Road, Suite 102, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27607. I've been working with, in traffic engineering for 24 years now, graduate NC State undergrad and masters, registered professional engineer in North Carolina, registered professional traffic operations engineer as well. We completed the traffic study back in '22 for the Burnett Farms residential development, which included both the townhomes and the apartment complex. At the time, that 125 townhomes, I believe that the number has now been reduced to 95. We also looked at 350 apartment units. That's also been reduced just slightly, 348. Counts were conducted December 2021. We looked at, the volumes were grown by 3% for six years, ambulance growth, 3% for six years. We also looked at three approved area developments that were either fully built or partially built at the time, Auburn Village, Auburn Station, and Edge of Auburn, to add that as additional approved area development traffic. Recommendations from the TIA came out to be left-turn lanes at both site driveways. The study was provided to the town and NC DOT for review and comment. DOT came back with turn lane, another return lane requirement at Site Access 2, which is the easternmost site access, and also came back with east and westbound left-turn lanes at East Garner Road, at Auburn Knightdale Road, and they also came back with a right-turn, excuse me, an eastbound right-turn lane at Rock Quarry Road. With those improvement recommendations or requirements in place, the levels of service at each of the intersections that were analyzed should remain consistent, if not improved, at each location. The turn lanes at the site driveways should help the entering vehicles coming off of Auburn Knightdale Road successfully stack until they provide gaps into, or find a gap to turn into the site for access to the development. I'm here for any questions. Be happy to go in, further in-depth, if you, if there's a desire for that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time tonight. My name is Stephen Peeden. I'm with Avison Young in Raleigh, address 5440 Wade Park Boulevard. 1994 graduate of NC State, been a licensed real estate broker for over 30 years prior to graduating from NC State. Being a Raleigh native, I've seen a lot of change in the Triangle area. Been practicing real estate, like I said, for 30 years. Started my senior year at NC State. During my career, I've been involved in all aspects of commercial real estate, focused primarily on land brokerage for all asset classes, including retail, industrial, office, single-family, and multifamily development throughout the Garner and Greater Triangle area. I've studied various trends in commercial real estate, wanting to make sure that I'm helping clients develop properties that will enhance not only the neighborhoods in which they're located, but the communities in general. In my experience, I have found when neighboring properties, excuse me, in my experience, I have found when development occurs within a rural agricultural area, it does not substantially injure neighboring properties, but rather creates value for the neighborhood. I have evaluated several submarkets where this has taken place, as well as the value of surrounding properties post-development, and the results have been consistently positive with increasing land values once development has occurred. There are a number of reasons for this, which include having utilities being extended to the site neighboring properties, additional infrastructure, road, water, sewer, and interest from retailers that are interested in areas due to the additional rooftops. Specifically, I've reviewed Burnett Farms Apartments SUP application in detail, including the site layout, infrastructure improvements to be made, architectural design, and the adjoining and abutting properties surrounding the proposed project. The properties that join or abut the proposed Burnett Farms apartment project are either underdevelopment by the same developer for townhomes, or consist of raw laying being held by Burnett Farms LLC for future development. With respect to the raw land being held for future development, the owners of that property have expressed their full support for Burnett Farms Apartments project. Based on my experience and expertise as a commercial real estate in Garner and the Triangle area, it is my professional opinion that proposed Burnett Farms Apartments project will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting properties, but rather will likely increase the value of the properties and be a benefit not only to the abutting properties, but the community in general. Thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, just, I'd like to ask that, I've handed some documents to the town attorney, one being the full TIA that was completed that the traffic engineer testified to, a letter that was prepared by Mr. Peeden that summarizes exactly what he just testified to, as well as the PowerPoint presentation that Ms. Blackman presented here tonight. I'd like to ask that those documents be moved into the record and made part of the record for tonight's proceeding. I think you said it earlier, Mayor, that the staff report was already part of the record, but just for purposes of clarity of the record, we'd like to make sure the staff report, which was prepared by Mr. Linsky, which summarizes the project's consistency with the master plan, zoning conditions, UDO requirements, and other town policies, be made part of the record as well. And so, with that, Mayor, I would like to summarize the evidence on the standards, but it may be more efficient if there's anyone else here to speak tonight. Before I do that, then I could perhaps provide our final summary of the evidence.
Okay. So, that's all the speakers from your team?
Yes, sir. That is all the speakers from the applicant's team and the evidence being presented by the applicant's team. Yes, sir.
And Ms. Jones, we do have that as part of the record, as he requested, the documents?
Yes, I have received the documents.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll ask our town clerk, Ms. Gibson, is there anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. I believe that the
We do have some?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Margaret Class?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. We appreciate you coming. Step right up, introduce yourself, name and address.
I'm Margaret Class, and I live at 119 English Violet Lane, which is the neighbor to this property that is being recommended. I have to say, I'm surprised if you had a meeting with the neighbors, because that would be our village. We have 370 units there, single-family homes with 72 units that are duplexes. We're a very active community and very involved, and we have Facebook pages that everybody uses. I saw no notice of any meetings, so the comment earlier that there were six people at a meeting, I'm not sure who they talked to, to get input from the neighbors, but that would be us, the neighbors. I came to the rezoning last year, and the conversation went around, we can't do anything with trying to get commercial in there because it's not big enough, there's not homes, there's not whatever. So, we went from single-family homes to the new, that you referred to, that was to be mixed townhouses that would be along our side, and then into apartments, and then considering some sort of commercial and in that area. And now, we're two apartment buildings, and just lots of apartment buildings in a very small space. I don't see how it brings up the value of my single-family units. The building next to us, that's now building on the other side of us, is single-family homes, and that's our block. Single-family homes, single-family homes, some duplexes, and now 11 apartment buildings. So, I'm really concerned about the density. The traffic continues to increase. The roads are not designed for this many places. I don't see from the design where, I assume some of these apartments will have kids. I don't see where they go when they play, and being the neighborhood group, we love kids, but we're not necessarily looking for them to be over in our neighborhood either, you know? Like, I just, I just don't see where we're going exactly with this. I understand it's a business, and I understand builders are a business to make money, and that's all great, but we have to live there. I have, that's where I live, you know? And I just don't see how we're going in a good direction on this corner with the amount of houses that are being built and that whole subarea. I just don't see where we're going with it. So, I do have concerns of conversations with the neighbors. I don't think, I just don't think that anybody got notified very well to have those conversations or anything. Their biggest open space is a pond that's not usable to swim or anything, so I don't see the value piece of that adding it to it either. So, I'm just really concerned about where this one's going.
Well, thank you for your comments. Thoughtful. I might ask, is it okay to get Mr. Linsky just to clarify one or two issues at this point? Just to kind of rehash, to remind us, this is, this is a part of a larger community development that was rezoned in tandem with apartments and the single-family homes that are just not part of this SUP. So, I think that the original plan that showed townhomes and apartments, that's accurate.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, it was, I think, I believe, approved for 125, and then 95 were proposed in the subdivision plan that was approved in December of 2023, I believe. That's not shown on here, so you don't see that per se, but it does wrap around the western and northern part of the apartments.
So, there would still be single-family homes toward there?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be townhomes that are, that are, you know, attached, but yeah, single-family attached.
Single-family. And likewise, there was some discussion at the rezoning of where is the commercial? And that is, we've been told by the property owners and this developer, there is a plan for some commercial use adjacent to the Rock Quarry Road there at the intersection.
I can't affirm that, but I think that would be consistent with what our new comprehensive plan calls for.
I'm just saying, I don't think we've abandoned those ideas. It's still in the works. Okay. Thank you. Was there anyone else signed up to speak?
No.
Okay. That being the case, would you like to summarize now, sir?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Maybe I'll just touch on one point you just mentioned. As I noted, the 20 acres that's to the east of this site will obviously have to be rezoned at some point, and it's going to have a shared drive, as was shown on the plan. And, you know, with this residential going in, I think it makes that property extremely more valuable for future commercial development. When it comes in for rezoning, it'll have to go through that process for the council to consider what's appropriate for that corner at that time. And I just, for the record, I only do this because I'm required to do it under state law. I just want to make just an objection to any testimony that was provided related to traffic or property values. I did not hear any testimony about it being from an expert or anyone qualified to make opinions on that, so I just have to do it for the record. Thank you again, Mayor, and members of council. I want to briefly just run through the special use permit standards. The first standard is that the proposed use will not endanger the public health or safety. There's been no competent evidence or testimony provided tonight that would indicate that the proposed multifamily project would endanger the public health or safety. The evidence, however, that's been presented via the staff report and the applicant's witnesses demonstrates the proposed use is consistent with the approved master plan rezoning and complies with all UDO requirements. Additionally, evidence was presented that all NC DOT recommended transportation improvements are being made in connection with this development and the adjoining townhome development, and the project is not within a watershed protection area or a FEMA floodplain area, and there are sufficient utilities to serve the project, and that the stormwater control measures are being implemented that address both water quality and water quantity. Standard number two is that the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. The only evidence tonight provided by an expert is the testimony of Mr. Stephen Peeden, licensed commercial real estate broker with 30 years of experience, who provided his opinion that based on the review of market and relevant data, that the proposed project would not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, and that it would likely increase the value of property. He also testified that the adjoining or abutting properties are properties that are either owned by the developer under development for townhomes, or property that is owned by the Burnett Farms entity, which owns the vacant land around the site. Standard three, if completed as proposed, the development will comply with all requirements of the UDO. That evidence was provided via the staff report, and Ms. Blackman going through all the relevant UDO standards, and that they had been satisfied. The proposed use is consistent with the town's adopted transportation plans and other relevant adopted plans and policies and the stated purpose of these UDO. Again, Ms. Blackman, as well as the staff report, provided evidence that the proposed use is consistent with the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan, the Garner Forward Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the Parks, Recreation, Greenways, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. The proposed use is consistent with the MFB zoning district, which is intended to accommodate more intense multifamily uses with large structures that contain more units. The proposed use is also consistent with the master plan approved for this site in January 2023, as well as state law, that the inclusion of a use within a zoning district creates a presumption that the use is in harmony and consistent with the intent and purposes of the UDO plans and policies. Standard number five, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses and proximate neighborhood in terms of building scale, site design, buffering, and screening, and operating characteristics. Ms. Blackman provided testimony regarding the consistency of the building design and architectural features with the approved master plan, as well as the transition from single-family homes to the west, to townhomes, to this multifamily project, to that vacant 20 acres at the intersection of Auburn Knightdale and Rock Quarry, which is intended for future commercial development and mixed uses. Ms. Blackman also provided testimony concerning the buffering and screening that we provided, and it complied with the UDO requirements. Standard number six, any significant adverse impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated or offset, including impacts on the natural environment. There was no competent or material evidence provided tonight that indicated any significant adverse impacts would result from the proposed use, and testimony was provided by Ms. Blackman regarding the stormwater controls to be implemented, and that there would not be any significant adverse impacts on the natural environment as a result of the proposed use. You also heard testimony from our traffic engineer about both the onsite and offsite transportation improvements that would be constructed to mitigate traffic impacts from the proposed development, and that all of the recommendations from both the town and the NC DOT have been included in the proposed development plans. Standard number seven, the public safety, transportation, and utility facilities and services will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development. Testimony was provided by Ms. Blackman, and noted in the staff report that the site has been designed to accommodate fire truck, emergence, and emergency vehicle turning movements, and provides connections to the public streets in the subdivision leading to Auburn Knightdale Road. She also testified that there was inadequate public utilities, facilities to serve the site while maintaining sufficient levels of service for the existing development. Our transportation engineer also provided testimony that with the road improvements recommended by DOT and being implemented, that sufficient levels of service for the existing development would be maintained. Adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been Our transportation engineer also provided testimony that with the road improvements recommended by DOT and being implemented, that sufficient levels of service for the existing development would be maintained. Adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided. Regarding continuing maintenance, I will note there will be a property management company engaged to ensure continuing maintenance of the property, including landscaping, building maintenance, parking lot maintenance, and any necessary maintenance to the other open space and infrastructure on the site. You will see on the site plan, a maintenance shop is shown in the northeast corner of the apartment site plan, adjacent to the dog park. And there will be, it's my understanding, at least one, if not three, full-time maintenance technicians employed for the apartments. Typically, you have one full-time employee per one hundred units, so there will be three people fully employed and dedicated to the site for maintenance of the buildings, as well as the landscaping and other improvements. So I appreciate your patience, Mayor, and members of council. As I went through those standards and the evidence, we believe it demonstrates that we've met our prima facie case as to each of the eight SUP standards, and there's been no competent or material evidence presented to the contrary. And so we would respectfully ask pursuant to the UDO and state law that we would ask that the SUP application be approved. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, members of council, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, thank you. And if we get a motion in a second, then we can have some further discussion among ourselves before the vote.
I do have actually a couple of quick questions.
You'd like some follow-up questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I just want to be clear on some of the representations you're making about the adjoining property. So you're representing that there will be commercial development adjacent to this property?
I am representing that that site has to go through the rezoning process, and the future land use map, as I understand it, or your comprehensive plan designates that as an area for mixed use and commercial development. And so I think it's prime for it. I think this proposed development will certainly make it more attractive for commercial development, and so it'll be a decision that this council or whoever's there at the time will have to make as to what goes on that site. But that's what it calls for, and that's what will be a future decision.
But at this time, it's vacant, raw land?
Currently, yes, sir.
And I just want to ask our planning department, do we have submitted plans for those adjacent parcels? So, okay, so my estimation, that makes it inconsistent with the plan in that that area calls for mixed-use development, which this isn't. I can't base a decision on plans that don't exist. My other question is, do you think the absence of elevators creates an equitable housing opportunity for those wishing to seek these apartments?
I don't know that I'm necessarily qualified to talk about that point. I mean, I know what the building code requires with respect to three-story buildings, and elevators are not required. You know, I think that it'll be something that, as the developer decides to develop, whether that makes sense for these units or not, I think it's a market decision as to what we yield, but I'm not really qualified to answer that question.
Follow-up, would you consider it an adverse impact to create housing that is inequitable?
I would not consider it a significant adverse impact if a building complies with the building code and meets the requirements of state law and the UDO as to what can be constructed. I would not consider that a significant adverse impact, no, sir.
Thank you, that's all.
That being said, is there a motion to approve the special use permit?
I find the application SUP SP 2301 meets the town's eight criteria for the special use permit as identified in Article 4.7.4.D. Therefore, I move that the town council approve SUP SP 2301, Burnett Farms Apartments, with the six site-specific conditions recommended by the technical review committee to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matthews, motion by Mr. Vance. So I will ask the council now, who is, if you are in favor of approving the special use permit, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed by nay. That would be one nay, and apparently three ayes. So the motion, the approval passes for the special use permit. Okay, thank you. Thank you all, and that concludes the quasi-judicial hearing on that item tonight. Thank you for your patience. Next on the agenda is the zoning text amendment to the Garner Forward implementation. And our presenter is our planning director, Jeff Treisenberg. What can you tell us, Jeff?
I can tell you about the updates to the package since we have last met on this, which was during the work session last month. So thank you again, it's good to be here before you. As I noted in the agenda cover, some of the things that were added between the last work session and tonight's public hearing were things in the administrative modifications section, some additional items related to the MFB district in terms of uses, standards, and building heights. But I do want to just take a moment to go through, again, the staff report with a focus on the highlighted sections. I'm glad and happy to revisit anything else that you would like to talk about. But we'll just go through page by page, I won't skip around this time. But in Section 4.7.4, which is the section that talks about special use permits, this is where we've had, I think, some considerable discussion amongst folks in the last week or so since the work session. Couple of things. One, the first one in subsection two, as a way, and this ties in with some of the MFB proposal, and it's also tied into the idea of trying to encourage and represent that we're looking for vertically mixed-use buildings. And that, so that would be to remove the special use permit requirement for residential if we were to get a project that had over two hundred units of upper-story residential to potentially forego the special use permit requirement there. But that would be the only type of residential dwelling unit that would not count. Some-
I have a question before you go on, because the wording on, I see what you're trying to do, I kind of like it.
Yep.
It's a little vague when it says residential development or subdivision involving.
Gotcha.
And so what percentage of it has to be residential versus then some other non-residential use that is associated with the same project? So it's a, I get the intent, it makes a lot of sense, but I think at the cutoff point for, we're doing apartments over here and something totally unrelated, so when we start having a commercial mixed-use or activity center, it's like, oh, we've got the little mixed-use over here, the upper-story residential over here, we don't need the permit. So that kind of, there's a little, it's, I'm not quite sure what the loophole is, but it sounds like a loophole.
Right, right, no, I think I understand exactly what you're getting at. We can certainly tighten that up, yep. And then the one that probably has received the most conversations today, again, was about the parts that potentially, we had the thresholds, which are still in there, but then also potentially adding some exceptions for certain uses. So far, we seem to have a clear, fairly clear consensus, we feel, around research and development, hospital, and ambulatory health and emergency care facilities. We had previously mentioned higher education in both office and medical office. We have not included those as of yet, but would certainly welcome any input in that regard. This is probably the biggest one that we're looking for some feedback.
So I was reading the UDO back again, and the only real reference to research and development activities is under other light industrial, and, which is fine in and of itself, but the way it's worded, it says, "research and development activities to manufacturing, compounding, processing, packaging, storage, assembly, and/or treatment of finished or semi-finished products from previously, and all enclosed in a building." I'm not clear if research and development activities include all of the manufacturing, compounding, processing, storage, all that, and the treatment, or is it, I can just do the processing, I can just do the packaging, I can just do the storage. Then the storage part concerns me because then it becomes just storage, and it's not a very active, it doesn't sound like research and development if it's just storage. So, again, we don't really have a lot of definition to research and development in the UDO. So that kind of, again, I'm not quite, it's a little vague on what we mean by research and development.
So we took that definition straight from, I'm pretty sure it was straight from the NAICS codes that the federal government puts out. So my understanding would be that it would have to qualify under that, so I would think that that would be-
That reference in the change, so that it's connected by reference?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, because admittedly, I am not a research and development expert either, but that was the best thing I think that we could hone in on for a fairly concrete definition. All right. Non-residential development standards, Section 5.9.1. We have had some discussions about this in small meetings within the CMX district. Because we do have a standard for which the height can increase as you increase setbacks, we feel that this is a fairly self-regulating type thing. I have, I think, indicated that we are, will do some research on this, and we can certainly get it done prior to planning commission to look at just exactly how that plays out with the existing CMX districts. I'm starting, I had some initial conversations with our GIS specialist about taking a look at our existing CMX and trying to model how that works, and just to see where we get some tall heights and what that looks like in terms of the surrounding development. But again, we do feel like that will be fairly self-regulating, but we will have that information to present to the planning commission and to you all coming back as well.
Do you have potential hotels play into this here?
So in a CMX district, if you had a six- or seven-story hotel, currently that would exceed the forty-five-foot height, maximum height, but the setbacks may be anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five feet from the property line. As long as they increase their setbacks by a foot, they can go up another two feet. So if you have a sizable enough property, and they usually have to have, you know, fairly substantial parking, they can center the building in the site and have a larger setback, and therefore be able to go taller.
Is there a limit of how many stories we're talking about here?
So theoretically, there's no cap. It depends on the size of the lot. You would have to have a sizable lot such you could really increase the setbacks. But I think by the time you get to that point, you're going to want to rezone to our AC district so that all of that structured parking, there might be parking underneath, things of that nature, yeah. In the actual use table, we've had some discussions internally about our MFB district. And this goes back again to kind of the vertical mixed-use, where do we want to see that, and how we're differentiating between our MFA and our MFB. Currently, there's not any options to do ground-floor retail in an MFB district. And we also do not have any districts that really help us meet that mid-rise section, which is kind of the six to ten stories. The AC certainly does, but that's also geared to the high-rise. So we feel like there's an opportunity with the MFB district to really try to emphasize that vertical mixed-use within that MFB district by allowing some of those, very much those uses, non-residential, that are truly supportive of folks who might be living there, that they would find convenient on the ground floor. So we've looked at things like higher education, indoor athletic or indoor entertainment, other office, medical office, sit-down restaurants, daycares, gyms and spas, and personal and professional services, as well as retail sales that don't have any outdoor operations. So when we looked through the use table, we felt like those were the types of things that we would want to see in a first-floor environment with residential above it. So we have proposed that for your consideration, but noting that in the MFB district, these uses are only permitted in buildings, that would be an additional standard, that have upper-story residential. So we wouldn't want to, again, happy to discuss further if you think otherwise, but we're trying to guard against the idea of having apartments, but then having the commercial or the non-residential in a separate building, really trying to encourage that on the ground floor.
What would you see as the two biggest differences between then the MFB and the commercial mixed-use? The commercial mixed-use would then be more allowing vertical and horizontal mixed-use, whereas MFB would really only allow sort of vertical mixed-use?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and the CMX would still be geared a little more towards the low-rise, although you would have the opportunity, if the site's big enough, to get into those other categories. Then taking some feedback from the last one, we're proposing to strike the industrial manufacturing or production indoor only from the activity center, since we want to keep that activity center zoning more towards that vertical aspect that you would find in a traditional town center. And then changing research and development to still take it out and keep it as a separate use so that it's not lumped in with the flex space and the warehousing, but to add that to CMX instead of the AC, so those two would kind of go together. We would encourage it within the CMX. The CMX could potentially then be a different type of activity center-enabled zoning district. So like I say, those two kind of go together for that. Moving to the open space discussion, we struck the trails being active. And we did note that the, for recreation facilities, there was some discussion about some things only being open on a seasonal basis. So allowing those types of active recreation to only comprise a certain percentage of the overall active recreation, so they couldn't just do a pool. And then under administrative modifications, this was where we talked about a threshold for the parking. I will note that, for the most part, they could request something through a conditional rezoning request, and that I think would be how we would direct folks. But in the past, that threshold seemed to kind of be set around the fifteen percent mark. We're certainly open to more discussion about that, it originally was twenty. We proposed dropping it to fifteen, but we also noticed that not only should the number of accessible parking spaces not be affected, we also don't believe that the bicycle parking that we have now, as well as the electric vehicle charging stations, that those numbers should be reduced either. So we wanted to clarify that those should not be affected by any reduction.
I have a question, what's the frequency with which these reductions have been requested? Is it all of them, most of them, some of them, is it a mix? It just depends on the site, what sort of the theme?
Yeah, it really just depends. I mean, we have seen it more on the multifamily, but I will say not nearly now as frequently that we've adopted the new parking standards. So it's fairly rare. I would say we probably see it more now where there's a use that has a significant storage component, but the parking table really doesn't take that into account. And so it may, there may be a, for instance, we had a paint store discussion not too long ago, like a Sherwin-Williams-type thing, where it was required- ago, like a Sherwin-Williams type thing, where it was requiring up to northwards of fifty parking spaces. And a good portion of the building was going to be just for paint storage and the cans that they're going to be mixing. So we talked about how we might be able to chop the building up and calculate the parking by each individual use, but even that gets a little wonky. So that, that's, that's more the scenario we're seeing now is those types of uses that really span the gamut of what's in the building. And then finally, on the shared parking standards, again, we talked a little bit about this. Staff settled on where both uses participating in the shared parking agreement are non-residential, no matter what the zoning district is. So as long as we're in the non-residential realm, trying not to have, you know, the parking expand, because we do have a lot of places where there probably is excess parking today. And so allowing that to happen, as long as that they can show that those hours of operations are not conflicting and that they can be documented within their approval to show that there won't be competing demand. So that's all the updates that we have for you from the work session. I'll be glad to touch on anything else that you'd like to. But we did include everything, of course, in the staff report and along with the accompanying little, the notes guide reference. So glad to answer any questions or any questions from the public if they have them.
I would also ask if anyone has signed up to speak. No one signed up. Yeah, thank you very much. That's a lot of information. Just to reemphasize, this is all a work in progress. The U D O is fairly static, but, but we have to make adjustments as we go to interface with the comprehensive long-term plan. And as you work through the actual situations, what makes sense, what helps us accomplish our goals. So thank you for your attention to detail and thanks for the very astute questions and close reading by our council members on that as well. And this will continue to be a work in process. Our question here is, should we refer this to the planning commission? And that will be coming up. So if there's no other testimony, we'll, we'll close the public hearing and we'll move to considering a, a motion from the council to refer this to the planning commission for consistency, review and recommendation. Is that a motion?
I move that, that the public hearing be closed to refer this matter to the, to the planning commission for consistency, review and recommendation.
Motion's been made, or is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Matthews. Is there any further discussion or question on this, on this idea? Okay. That being said, those council members in favor of approving referring this to the planning commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Seems unanimous. The motion passes. It will be referred to the planning commission. Thanks again for your help there, Mr. Trezenberg. And now moving to new and old business, and Mr. Trezenberg may still be up here to be our presenter, a man of many talents.
Yes, I do, I do feel bad that Erin's not here because this was the first case that she took right from the beginning. And I know she would like to be here as well, but such, such is the case. There's, there's definitely something going around the, the first floor on our side. C Z twenty-four oh oh one three twelve, U S Highway seventy east, coming back to you from the planning commission. Again, just a reminder, the applicant is Helcon Companies via Tracey Duzenberry Tate, who is the local representative. And this is to rezone approximately five acres to a single commercial mixed-use conditional district, a tier-one request. Just a reminder of the current situation, we have that split-zone parcel, partially commercial mixed use on the front and light industrial in the back. And it is on the edge of a couple of different activity centers, and we went over that during the public hearing, but again, just want to give you that visual orientation. And the review overall has remained the same. The project hasn't changed a whole lot, but I will highlight a couple of things. The planning commission did have just a few questions and comments. They certainly expressed their appreciation for the opportunity to bring more affordable housing for seniors. And they did make some recommendations for connecting and looping the sidewalk in a couple of different places. So the applicant certainly has heard that, and staff will be working with them if they are to proceed to the site plan level to make sure that that pedestrian network is working efficiently, create some good open spaces for the residents to take a walk. And so the planning commission did find that in the absence of any strong, non-supporting comprehensive plan criteria and a strong level of consistency with the plan's growth framework, this request to rezone approximately five point oh four acres from commercial mixed use and light industrial to commercial mixed use conditional is consistent with the town's adopted land use plans. And so they made that motion to adopt that statement and to recommend approval to you all tonight. The motion was made by Mr. Carson and seconded, seconded by Ms. Avant, and the vote was unanimous. And just wanted, wanted to show you, when they were looking at the applicant's sketch, which again is not part of the, part of the actual request, but just as a talking point, one of the things that the council was pointing, or that the commission was pointing out to was this area in here, it certainly backs up to these parcels here, but there is a significant grade differential. This will sit at ground level, it will be much lower than the sites up on seventy. And so the commission was just concerned that this not be so much of a back door kind of feel, that the residents could be invited to walk through there. There certainly will probably be retaining walls there that will kind of provide a nice enclosed feeling, but, but working to kind of create some space there that could be walked through on this side of the building as well as on the more traditional front. So just wanted to highlight that for you. Again, the applicant is here tonight, but it is your prerogative here tonight to consider the reasonableness of the request. And we have those five reasonableness criteria that are taken from the U D O. And so we do have a draft motion for you for tonight to adopt ordinance twenty-two four fifty-two sixty-seven. And I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. The applicant is here as well, in case you do have any additional questions for them.
Would the council like to ask a question or two of the applicant, particularly related to the, the issues that the planning commission brought up?
I'd just like to make a statement, and that is that this is a tier-one consideration, and the applicant would above and beyond provide, to provide the site layout, which is not required for tier-one. For tier-two, yes, but tier-one, no. So that is kudos to the applicant, but I just want to make that point of clarification.
Yeah, good observation. Would there be any questions for, for the applicant? Okay. I, I think this has been through the process very thoroughly, good improvements and suggestions all the way through. So with that being said, I'll ask the, the council members, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the town council accept the planning commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with adapted land use plans detailed in section three of the staff report as our own. And I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number twenty-two four five-two-six-seven, approving rezoning C Z dash two-four dash zero-zero-one, as the request is reasonable in the public interest because the proposed district is compatible with present zoning confirming uses on nearby properties and with the character of the neighborhood.
C Z's made the motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Behringer. So that being the case, all in favor of adopting the ordinance, passing, accepting that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Trezenberg. Thank you, council members. This is one we've looked at from the beginning and liked it, found it to be a good fit, and are glad to see it moving ahead. So that's more good news tonight. Now, another exciting presentation from Mr. Trezenberg, this time about everybody's favorite topic, extraterritorial jurisdiction. But we're still here on earth. We're, we're, it's not extraterrestrial.
Certainly have gotten that a few times in the years.
Yes. Good, good to be bringing this to you and keeping to the anticipated timeline that we're trying very hard to keep to for y'all. But I am here tonight to just discuss very briefly the contents of the report for you so that you understand exactly what you would be forwarding to the Wake County Board of Commissioners if you were to approve the resolution this evening. So where are we at? These are just the first kind of ten steps that you've seen in your memos previously kind of outlining the whole process. We're right now at step number two, with step number three able to happen in quick succession. Steps four and five would be kind of the next part that town staff would be working on. And the items six through ten in orange are those that are primarily just taken by the county. We participate and are certainly there to receive feedback and answer questions, but those are all county-led. So we're at the, at the point of wrapping up this report and request phase, moving into the public outreach and the county review kind of at the same time. Just a reminder, we are operating within a three-mile request limit. That's as far as state statutes will allow us to go, and we're kind of naturally hemmed in by some agreements with our neighboring jurisdictions as well as the county line. So the request that's in your package for tonight is a total of eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight acres, just shy of fourteen square miles. We've divided it up into three kind of sub-areas identified as the northwest, the southern and the northeast, and you see the stats for each of those there. For the northwest area, it's about a mile and a half in terms of square miles, nine hundred and thirty-six acres. We kind of have three distinct sub-areas there that are, there's nothing that's connecting them except some right-of-way. We've had three requests in this area for connections to utilities. Not all of them have been granted, but we have had three requests. And it does include the existing Colonial Heights neighborhood and some other smaller neighborhoods in this area, because those donut holes would be fairly small if we were to leave them out. They would be less than a half a square mile, and just in talking with the county, staff feels like anything that's under a square mile is probably not going to be looked on favorably. So we have, in this initial proposal, requested that those neighborhoods in that area be included. But again, most of this was really enhanced by the regional lift station that's being established by George's Landing. That lift station's going to be down in this area here. So that certainly has sparked the interest in the connections to utilities in this area. The southern area, really along the five forty corridor between four oh one and forty, this one looks a little more spidery, I think, but it is all one contiguous area. Just as a point of reference, there's the fire station location. This is the largest and encompasses nine and a third square miles, so just shy of six thousand acres. We are seeing increased development in this corridor because of five forty, as well as the efforts of the City of Raleigh and staff to work with private developers on ways to extend the municipal water and sewer systems. It does include several existing subdivisions surrounded by five forty, particularly along Holland Church Road, ten-ten road and N C fifty. Any jurisdictional donuts, though, in this area are at or just above one square mile. So we're going to see how, how the county responds to those. And final area is two sub-areas. It may not look like it, but all of this, we actually have some right-of-way that is not currently in our E T J. So all of this up here along Old Balcom Road and Rock Quarry is connected and contiguous. And then there's this larger area south of Business Seventy down to the future White Oak interchange. This is just a little over three square miles. It does include the Meadowbrook Estates subdivision, which there's a number of houses there. One of our planning commission members is a resident there, but there are a lot of undeveloped lots, and it is certainly being, some of the, some of it, particularly on the eastern end, is being affected by the new interchange. And then it also includes the Golden Plantation neighborhood off of Guy Road. The northern sub-area, it does stop well short of the county line, as you can see out here. That is because there is significant state-owned property, the Clemens Forest, as well as the golf club. We certainly have had hundreds of thousands of square feet of new flex space and industrial in this area of our jurisdiction along the seventy corridor. We now have a kind of a semi-regional lift station that's being constructed at the edge of Auburn that other development can tie into. We also have done other minor utility extensions. The town did one recently along the seventy corridor here to bring some sewer availability to seventy business, and other minor utilities have been extended in this area as well. Oh, I did want to point out, we do have one tract right here, which is part of the original Burnett Farms assemblage, all under the same ownership. We are working with the City of Raleigh planning staff. We actually have a draft annexation agreement renewal that we will be bringing to you in the next couple of months that would bring this portion of, of this lot into Garner's jurisdiction. Currently, it's in Raleigh's jurisdiction, but we're proposing a couple of small swaps. It has been reviewed by both staff in both jurisdictions and will be coming to you. So we've gone ahead and included that, knowing that the annexation agreement actually has to be adopted before this report can be finalized and final action from the county.
Jeff, can you go back to the four oh one south, like the Caddy Road Fire Station back up four oh one?
That's really not showing on this one, but it's, it's right here. That's, that's the Caddy Road Fire Station.
I'm thinking about four oh one from, for example, from ten-ten back up into Garner.
Sure. So there's the northwest area here. This is Simkins Road.
Continue on down four oh one.
Right. We're not taking in anything new. We're not proposing to take anything new further south on four oh one.
What about the, I guess, where ten-ten crosses four oh one? All that is in Garner City limits, Costco, all of that?
Yes, that's already in the E T J, so there's nothing further to take in in that area.
That's, that's the bottom line.
Yeah.
From that north, we're okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly. So now digging into the report, there are six criteria that the county outlines, and I've shown those there, and I'll go through each one of those here briefly. The first criteria is, is for us to consider the Wake County's development framework map designation. This is part of their comprehensive plan, which is called Plan Wake. They have four, they actually have five land use designations, but there's only four in this area. They're called walkable center in purple, community, which is in the gold color, community reserve in the light green, and rural in the dark green. So they want to see how much of what we're asking for is in, in those first two. So fifty-seven point seven percent of our request is part of the purple and the gold. Of the remaining forty-two point three percent, there's, most of it is actually in the community reserve, which is okay, because that's an area where they expect it to become community, which I think in their terms is more just kind of suburban residential development primarily. But it's something that they expect to develop at an urban scale with utilities. So in the southern area, everything that's not part of the walkable center or community southern area, everything that's not part of the walkable center or community already is in that community reserve. So 100% of that is at least covered by the first three categories, so that's a good thing. Really, it's the rural that they're keying in on, and they're looking for a significant change in conditions probably to justify that. So we have two sections where the rural designation comes in. One is out here at the very end of Old Balcom Road, where you have the Clemens Forest nearby. This area is, it's a family subdivision right now. So it is developed unless that family subdivision redevelops. They are fairly sizable lots. But it is kind of a natural transition. But as soon as you get past that, you're into either state-owned or City of Raleigh-owned property. So I don't imagine that the county will probably object to us bringing that in, because otherwise it really is kind of a little bit of a gap between things. The other is our entire northwest area. This really came about because this plan is several years old, and really followed our last ETJ extension request. And so anything that was not part of our request in 2017, they counted as rural, just because they knew that there were significant utility challenges. Now that those utility challenges have been overcome, we believe that that, as staff, that that represents a significant change, and so therefore warrants the request in this area. Criteria number two is to demonstrate your growth and development within the area. So we're highlighting our joint planning efforts. In addition to Plan Wake, the county has done three small area studies that have all included parts of Garner. So staff, our staff has worked very closely with their staff on those small area studies, which kind of take their Plan Wake to another level of, of specificity. So we've highlighted that. We've also highlighted our development activity. In this map, we highlighted in pink an excess of 850 acres where we are seeing either active requests, or we're talking with developers who are bringing forth a request. And then we also highlighted annexations that are still pending in our system that have yet to be executed. And we have over 975 acres there. So that really shows recently approved development, where annexation is one of the conditions to them kind of breaking ground. So again, we've, I think we've made a good demonstration there that there's good activity going on in all parts of Garner. We talk about new roadways, and there we chose to focus primarily on 540, because 540 really does come right by the, right through the southern areas and through parts of the northeast area. And when I was talking with staff, we really kind of emphasized the 401 to 540 kind of circular route, that that's what we're really focusing on as a driver of growth and change. And then when it came to water and sewer, we pointed out a lot of our efforts at pre-planning with the 540 corridor to secure locations for utilities to traverse the 540 corridor. We highlighted our US 70 sewer main extension project, as well as the developer-coordinated extensions that are being worked on. Criteria three is the municipal comprehensive plan alignment. And so here, we tried to emphasize, and I did even within the report, we did a little side-by-side comparison of their plan to our plan. But then we also tried to emphasize two councils' recent decisions for projects, and how it aligns with our, at least our framework map that we've recently adopted, just to again demonstrate that council is making decisions that do have roots in consistency with our comprehensive plan. So by showing how our plans are aligned, as well as showing that we're trying our best to stick to our plans, that was where we wanted to focus that discussion. Criteria number four, municipal capital improvement planning and programming and service expansion planning and alignment. So you see here in the bulleted list, they asked us to address all of these items. So with some great assistance from other town staff, we were able to pull together some blurbs. Some of it was even in our comprehensive plan document, thanks to Mr. Nooncaster. We were able to list some language from there as well that spoke to everything that we've been doing in terms of capital improvement planning as well, and service improvements through our annual budget adoptions, to show that we are preparing and taking significant actions to address all of these services and capital fixtures. Criteria number five is related to community engagement, and most of this is still to come. But we did highlight our past efforts from the last ETJ extension. The county was very pleased with our efforts last time. And we also gave them a preview of what we're looking to do in the months ahead. We have identified our website page from before, so we are updating that. Communication staff has helped us to draft a video, so we look forward to that coming to fruition shortly. And we're also going to be doing mailings, having a hotline or a dedicated phone number, and community meetings. Ms. Joseph has been reaching out to some area locations. She's so far secured availability at Juniper Level Missionary Baptist, Holland's Church, and the Panther Branch Community Development Corporation. We are seeking a couple of others, a little closer to the northwest and northeast area. We hope to have those locked up soon. And finally, criteria number six is achieving our comprehensive community goals, our joint ones. These, these are the things that the county has identified as priorities of theirs, and they were looking for evidence in a narrative form that showed everything that Garner's been doing to help them and, and work with them to address these goals. So those six goals were affordable housing, walkability, transit use, being aware of vulnerable communities, stormwater, and green infrastructure. And so again, you see there, again, with the help of many other numerous staff, we were able to pull together, I think, a good representation of everything that Garner does to promote these six issues. So here's the exhaustive list of all the people who helped me pull this together in a relatively short amount of time. I certainly could not have done it without them, especially with a little vacation time in there. So I'm very much appreciative to everyone in this list who helped pull this together, no matter how big or small. And so our next steps tonight would be to consider the resolution authorizing staff to forward the request and the report to Wake County. We would then forward the request and supporting materials to the Board of Commissioners, the Chair of the Board of Commissioners via the county planning staff. We are awaiting a couple of attachments from the City of Raleigh, so I anticipate that we can do this probably within the next five business days or so. But we would finish preparing for and begin to conduct our public outreach in late May and throughout the month of June. We would be attending the Wake County meetings and responding to their feedback. And then eventually, we'll return to council with implementation steps if our request is granted. And at that point, we would begin the actual adoption process of the new ETJ line, as well as establishing zoning for the new ETJ areas. So that's what I have for you this evening. Glad to answer any questions, but look forward to hopefully being able to forward this to the county.
Very much, Jeff. You and your team, and team in the broader sense, you had a lot of interdepartmental help on this, a lot of moving parts. Are there any further questions from the council, of Mr. Treesenberg? Okay. Very thorough. That, that being said, is there a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the staff to forward this request and report to Wake County?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Vance, and seconded, seconded by Ms. Behringer. So all in favor of adopting this resolution authorizing staff, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Job well done. Send it down. We'll see it when it comes back. And that moves us right along to committee reports. And let's see, I did make a note, HR committee, Mr. Vance.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There is a HR committee report, and would like to bring before you several individuals for approval to, for the various committees. And for the planning commission, we recommend Mr. Shane Banks and Sean Banks and Shane Banks, excuse me, and Ms. Maria Bishop. And for the senior advisory committee, recommend Ms. Joan Newman-Jackson.
Good work on that. There's no action we need to take. You've got it rolling.
They have to be approved. Recommend approval of those individuals. It has to be a motion made that the council approved these individuals to be on the various committees.
You want to make that motion, or you would prefer someone off your committee?
I'll make that motion.
Now, your move to approve those appointments, and Mr. Vance seconds?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of approving those appointments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. Passes unanimously. That's approved. Thank you for your good work on that. Always a lot more than meets the eye. Other committee reports. Move to manager reports, and I bet we have one or two.
We do, and I'll be very brief this evening. Just a reminder that the City of Raleigh's sewer improvement project on a section of Garner Road between Cofield Alley and New Rand Road is underway. It'll be underway and under construction for about the next three months. Eastbound traffic will do a detour onto Benson Road, then to US 70, turning left onto New Rand to get back to Garner Road. So there is a detour. I'm sure some of you have seen the detour, have been through the detour in the last couple of weeks. Westbound traffic will not be detoured. So just want to remind everybody that that's happening. It's an important project that needs to happen, and just ask for everyone's patience while that project is being completed.
I may add, it's been very well designated. If people will pay attention to what they're doing, it's not confusing.
Great to hear. And then the second update, I just want to remind council and the community that the open participation survey with the National Community Survey is still open and available for anyone to participate. We will be closing the survey as of May 10th, and then at that point, the open participation survey results, and then the random sample survey results goes to our partners who are helping us, Polico, to then do the data analysis and prepare reports for the next couple of weeks to send it back to the town for review and feedback. So we're excited that we, this far in the process, we just have a few more days. The survey's going to be open, and then the, the work will happen on the analysis part of the, the report. So those are my brief updates for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Hearing none, we'll call on attorney reports.
I just wanted to remind council that we're planning to participate in the regional board workshops on legislative zoning actions. We had originally planned to do that on the 16th, but it is now, there's availability on May 30th, and it would be from 1:00 to 4:30 PM. So I think we've heard from some of council members, we just need to finalize and get those registrations in.
Put that together. Okay. And are there any other reports from council in the broader sense?
I was able to attend the event sponsored by the Capital Area Preservation Group on Sunday at the Banks House. Well-attended, very well-attended. Four properties in Wake County were designated, or four buildings designated as historic landmarks, the Garner Women's Club being one of them. And they did such a good job with the presentation that I learned things I didn't know about the Women's Club. And the, the plaque, if you want to call it that, that they give you to put on your building, designating, was very hard to pick up and carry out.
And one guy carried three of them at once.
Oh, my.
He was really showing off.
May I dovetail right into what council and Behringer's saying? If you haven't had a chance to go to the Banks House to just look at it from a historical aspect, I would say, take the opportunity to go out and just look at a piece of history that's being, that's been restored that's right here in Garner. Great piece of history.
Just from the veteran's side, we've got Memorial Day weekend going to be coming up, and as usual, it's going, it's going to be a big event, rain or shine. Last year we fought with the rain, turned out really great. And we'll have more additional information coming out, but it's going to be a very good event coming up. And there's a lot of people and what Memorial Day is for those did make the sacrifice versus the regular veterans. So, but we'll have more details coming. It's going to be very, very big. We're excited about it.
I saw the outline, the, the poster, and there, there's a lot going on. And what a better place could you dream to have it than there at the Veterans Memorial?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other council reports? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Same.
Ms. Behringer moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthews. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. A motion passes unanimously. We close the meeting tonight. Thank you all for coming. This is the longest I've been in. We stayed awake the whole time.